This is the October 6 regular meeting of the Commerce City City Council. Mayor Douglas is away this evening, but he will be joining us by Zoom and will participate in the meeting as his mayor pro tem. I am taking his place this evening. This is a hybrid meeting of the city council. Members of the public can view this meeting on Channel 8, the city's website, and on YouTube. Live Spanish translation services are being provided for tonight's council meeting by telephone, so please dial 720-76 -- sorry, 720-786-9023 and use code 104091*.
Se ofrecen servicios de interpretación en español para esta reunión del Consejo Municipal por teléfono. Marque el número 720-386-9023 y utilice el código 104091*.
I'll now call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to call a rule.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble.
Present.
Councilmember Madura.
Present.
Councilmember Teeter.
Present.
Councilmember Chacon.
Present.
Mayor Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Kim.
Here.
Councilmember Dukes.
Present.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
And Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Eva Cora, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, all accounted for. Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to amend tonight's agenda? All right, then, is there a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented?
I had my Henry's boo.
Oh.
I'm not sure, but I just--
Councilmember Chacon?
Just to have it on record, Adams County Health Department, Michael Riddick, asked if we could wait for the healthy drinks on kids menu just till he gets back for a month to process it. So I don't know if we wanted to postpone or if we wanted to move ahead, but he called me personally to ask.
Councilmember Chacon.
It's the notice--
I hit a slight snag here. For the general public, I have hearing issues and I use a headset into the system that allows me to hear everyone clearly, and I can't hear as clearly when I'm not using my headset, and I forgot to put it in tonight. So if you can hang with me for a minute, I'm going to have to plug myself in here, and then-- And I am grateful to our IT people who arranged this for all of us at all of our stations. So no council member has to go -- has to participate in a meeting without being able to hear clearly because our sound system is not the world's greatest.
No worries.
All right. Councilmember Chacon, can you repeat your question?
Yes. On notice of council business tonight, we have healthy kids food menu for drinks. Adams County Health Department, Michael Riddick, the director, asked if we could wait one more month till he returns so that we could actually work with him to see what that would look like. I just wanted to see if we could postpone it for another month since it was personally asked to put it on record.
All right, hang on a second. Councilmember Kim and Councilmember Dukes are the cosponsors of that? Are you good with?
So I will also say that I've been emailing him also on that Friday evening as well, and he said, I told him, I said, this should not be an issue because of the city staff who'd be have to continue working it. It would take approximately four to five months to get back with, that this was just the initial motion to go ahead and have that, have this initiated essentially. So understanding while he is out, he can, you know, when he returns, he could be working with staff to essentially draft something up at that point. So I don't think there's necessary to go ahead and remove this item at this time, that we can continue moving forward, allow the motion to occur, and then from that point, when he does return after a month, staff would be able to work through it as well with him and collaborate.
Is that acceptable, Councilmember Chacon, or would you like to make a motion to amend the agenda?
That's fine. He said if it keeps the ball rolling, just as long as they reach out to him within that month so that he can be involved.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, and that was Councilmember Chacon, and I think that Councilmember Kim was the second. So I will ask the clerk to take a roll call vote now.
Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, the vote is unanimous. We move on now to public comment. All public comment, except for those on public hearings, will occur now. If you are intending to comment about a public hearing on tonight's agenda, please refrain from doing so until the public comment for that particular hearing. Public comments shall be limited to three minutes each, and if you're registered to speak for multiple items, you may speak multiple times. So will the clerk now call on any virtual or in-person speakers? Thank you.
We had one person signed up virtually. However, he is not on the Zoom link, so we'll move forward to those in person. The first person we have is Jeff Mark. Jeff, if you'd like to come up, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right there? Help, hear it. Good evening, council. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. My name is Jeff Mark. I'm a principal at Terracina Design. We are land planners, landscape architects, and civil engineers. We work on multiple projects here in Commerce City, and we work for multiple developers. I just wanted to briefly discuss a couple of items on, about the Land Development Code. It's my understanding that I have to speak at this time, not during that time, because that is not technically a public hearing. So with that, I just want to thank you guys, thank your staff and everybody for all the hard work that has went into the new Land Development Code. I've worked with them for a lot of hours on it. And now, really, we're just down to a couple of items that I just wanted to bring to your attention tonight. I did include a letter in your packet. These items really are relating to motor courts and green courts. Motor court, the first item is the driveway length. So in there, it states that motor courts must have a driveway, and the driveways must be at least 20 feet in length, which would mean every single one of those has to have a 20-foot driveway. I don't know if that was the intent of it, but I can tell you, I do design a lot of these. And what starts to happen with that is you start to create a parking lot if every single home has to have a 20-foot driveway. These motor courts are designed to be more communal spaces where people come out, hang out, your front doors are on it, not become a parking lot. Now, let's not say there's not instances where we do do driveway sometimes, but they're usually very select and very specifically designed. So just want you guys to make sure you discuss that and look into that. The motor court shared access configuration, the cul-de-sac versus the dead-end configuration. Again, I think that the intent of the cul-de-sac is really looking probably more towards Oakwoods product, when you do the carriage house and we rotate the two in the back. One of the reasons we've done that in the past is that it creates more interesting backyard space by rotating them. It's more usable space in the corners. Also, it creates variety in the homes. So with this, pretty much everything, we can do a four-building on the dead end. If we stay with that, that is what will happen. I can tell you, most developers will all do that. They'll all be very similar, and you won't get that variety in the buildings on the backside. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then the last one is on green courts. The building separation right now is set at 60 feet in your Land Development Code. I would urge you to look at Aurora. They spent a lot of time looking at different communities, looking at different green court configurations, measuring those out, and as part of that, they determined that 30-feet separation was really the best minimum separation in there. So again, that's half of what you guys are proposing. The 60-foot, although, is nice and works in some spaces, and a lot of developers will sometimes do those in select locations. What it does is it really burdens the homeowners, the HOA or the Metro District, with a lot of additional landscaping in the front of those homes. So with that, I think those were the three primary items that I just wanted to hit on. One last one is, I know it was brought up before, that motor courts utilize the, the utility configurations are better in green courts versus motor courts. They're actually the exact same utility configuration, so I just wanted to get that one out there, and thank you again.
Our next speaker is Sue McGowan. Sue, if you'd come up, we'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, council. My name is Sue McGowan. I live in Reunion in the North Commerce City area, and I have two issues I would like to comment on tonight. First of all, I'm very excited that you're going to put a substation in, a police substation in North Denver. However, I hope that you will reconsider spending the extra money on that project. After thinking about it a lot, if we could maybe downsize it a little bit, not do some of the community rooms and the extra amenities, that would help with the cost of the program, the project, and possibly we could use that money towards expanding Bison Ridge Rec Center, which is way over capacity right now, in my opinion. We have different rooms there that we use for exercise. There's really only two that they use for exercise, and the capacity for that is 25 people. And we turn away people at least twice a week. Different people can't come into the classes because we don't have room. The other thing that's needed there is the expansion of the pool, which, from my understanding, is that the infrastructure for that's already there, so the cost would be less than it would be if you had to go from scratch in that. So the other thing is that they also need summer camp, you know, for the kids, and that project would help the entire community, especially in North Denver. So I hope that you'll consider that, especially since there are no entertainment options in Commerce City for families. We don't have a bowling alley. We don't have a movie theater. We don't have anything, really, for the entire family. So I'm hoping that you'll look at that and hopefully reconsider. The second thing that I wanted to speak to was the widening of Chambers Road. I hope that you'll consider not doing that at this time. However, I do think the enhancements are needed where the lights are. So the light by King Supers, the light at Heartland, and the light at 117th is definitely needed. But what I would propose is that we use that money towards putting 112 through from Chambers to Potomac. You know, I've heard council talk about that they want the city to be more easily, better transportation, walkable, all those sorts of things, bike pass and that kind of stuff. And for the northeast side of Chambers, it would be very helpful if we could get that road through to the rec center and some of the businesses over there. So I would really encourage you to look at that and at least move it up on the priority list to get that accomplished. So thank you for these things, and I hope you'll consider them.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Scanlon. Michael, come on up. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm Michael Scanlon. I live at 9476 Sedalia Street. I was at Fall Fest on Saturday, a city event. Staff did a fantastic job. Fall Fest was a beautiful event. For a variety of reasons, didn't have a booth. I didn't find out about it in time. I didn't have a booth. Got there, and there were some empty booths, so I paid for a booth, but was quickly rejected. I wasn't pre-approved. So my first question is, as a political candidate, how do I get pre-approved by the city? Where do I go to get this preapproval? And do you publish a list of the people who are not approved or the causes that aren't approved for city events? I'd love to see that list. I was also told I couldn't do any politicking, so I'm just wondering where in city code we define politicking, so I know what not to do at city events.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. This is an operations event, and I think that someone will reach out to you and help answer your questions for you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jackie Valdez. Jackie, if you'd like to come up, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, council. Mayor Pro Tem. Couple things that I want to address tonight. Oh, okay, thank you. Couple things that I want to address tonight. I know that I've missed a few council meetings, but I do know that Keith came and spoke with council about a problem that we're having with some neighbors, where they are purchasing vehicles, bringing them, fixing them, and then in turn selling them. We've involved code enforcement. Code enforcement has been out there. They have spoke with them. They said that they were working on their wife's car. Well, their wife must own a lot of cars. Over half the cars that they're bringing in either has expired plates on them, or no plates on them, or expired tickets on them. So what they're doing is they're taking plates and they're switching these plates back and forth to these vehicles. So that's one of the problems that we're having with them, and this has been consistent for over two months. We're also having some problems with them partying. You can't call Commerce City Police on Saturday. They're not going to get there. You can pretty much bet you that the fighting, the partying, the screaming, the hollering, the music till 2:30 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, and then them arguing and fighting till 4:00 in the morning, and you're being woke completely out of sleep. So trying to call the police department to get the police department there, you'd be better just to just leave it alone because they're not going to get there in time. So I, I am sick and tired of the trucks. We've discussed this plenty of times, and I am tired of this. I've talked to several people with code enforcement. I have had a few officers out there. They've came out, they've put the sticker tickets on. What they do is they take that car, they take it, they put it in the back for a little while, and then they bring it back out again. So this is what we're dealing with, and I mean, they're one door over from me. So there's friends that's in between us and them, and, you know, they block the driveways. They take up all the parking with all these cars that they're not driving, you know? Keith has went over and went at them with over the vehicles and over the partying, but this last Saturday was just totally ridiculous because they finally went inside, partied inside, but then started fighting outside. So, you know, I mean, we need some help with the police department, and we need some help with code enforcement because nothing's getting done with any of this anymore, and I'm really getting tired of it. I mean, the city and council is supposed to be here for us, and I really feel like that we're being neglected on more than one occasion.
Thank you, Mrs. Valdez. Mr. Rogers, do you have someone who could speak to Mrs. Valdez in the hall?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Pro Tem, our last speaker this evening, this evening is Renee Bullock. Renee, if you'd like to come up, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Renee Bullock. I'm the executive director of the Commerce City Chamber of Commerce. I came here tonight to thank the city and all the council people and the candidates that came to our candidates' forums that we had on the 26th and the 27th of September. On the night of the 26th, it was at Bison Ridge. On the night of the 26th, on the morning of the 27th, it was at Eagle Point. And I also want to thank the League of Women Voters, Kathleen Jensen, and from Community College of Aurora, Samantha Ockville, and Jordan Contrer, and Leonardo, our timekeeper, for the event that they was, it was very good, and it is being shown on our 3Cchamber.com. So if you want to go and read any of the candidates' biographies or their questionnaires, it's on it, and both of the forums are being shown on that 3Cchamber.com. So again, I would like to thank you all for everything that you did to help. I would love to have it on Channel 8, but the city attorney, every time I say that just gives me a look like, okay, don't say that again. So I won't ask to have it on Channel 8 because every time I say that, he tells me, don't say that again. Thank you. But again, thank you to everybody here that cooperated and participated in our forums. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Members of the public were able to, is that, I believe that's it, isn't it? Okay, thank you. Members of the public were able to submit written comments online and by mail. Written comments were not received by the deadline. If follow-up is necessary, you should expect to be contacted by a staff member. Moving on now to notice council business. First up is healthy drinks on kids menus. The sponsor is Councilmember Kim. Councilmember Dukes is cosponsor. I invite Councilmember Kim to introduce their item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So Adams County Health Department presented on, did a presentation on reducing the availability of sugary drinks in kids menus and replacing them with water or unflavored milk. ACHD has reached out to several local restaurant owners who supports, who supported the initiative and has offered, has also offered to cover the cost of all menu reprints, removing essentially any financial burden on businesses with the, with this policy change. The policy does not prohibit families from purchasing sugary drinks. They would still be allowed to buy them if they choose. Commerce City aims to be the lead jurisdiction in this effort within Adams County with the hope that others in this county will follow suit. So my motion is to direct city manager to collaborate with city staff to draft and bring back for consideration an ordinance establishing a default requirement for kids menus of water or unflavored milk while expressly allowing families to purchase sugary beverages if they choose.
I thank you. That's the motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Dukes?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, that is an epic motion. Can you read that aloud? Clerk Garland?
I will send it over to you. Does that work? Do you want me to read it now, again?
I don't think we need you to read it again. You've already read the motion. Are you guys ready to-- you guys ready to vote?
All right, then, not quite. Councilmember Douglas?
Yes, thank you. Can you tell me what drinks will be offered, done with the menu?
It would be water or unflavored milk, but still allowing families to purchase sugary beverages if they choose.
Right, okay. So no juices or anything like that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then, I'll ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vote is unanimous. We now move to engaging parents to keep Commerce City streets safe. Councilmember Dukes is a sponsor, Councilmember Ford is a co-sponsor, and I will invite Councilmember Dukes to introduce their item.
Thank you. This motion is about just public safety and opportunities to have partnership with our community and with our parents. This is something that really comes from our community. As we all know, over the past few months, if not the past year, we've heard from residents about the worry and concern about youth riding dirt bikes, ATV and e-bikes on our streets and sidewalks in really unsafe ways. And so this motion, I'd like to make the motion to direct city staff and the city attorney to draft an ordinance that addresses the growing issue of minors riding dirt bikes, ATVs, e-bikes illegally or unsafely on our city streets. And in that motion, there's a number of details in there that we don't have to go through itself, but the overall motion is that on the table.
Thank you, is there a second? Oh, we already did that part. Did we get a second?
No.
Okay, I need a second. Councilmember Kim?
I'll second that.
All right, now, is there any discussion? I have a question. There are many specifics in this motion, in fact, there are five directions, establishing, including, outlining, exploring exceptions, providing and implementation plan, et cetera. Is that too detailed? Or are you okay with something that is that explicit in directing staff?
No, ma'am, there's nothing that's laid out within the expectation or the clarification of an outcome. I think what we will also have to provide is obviously what we can enforce, what we can't enforce, how we can go about that, and other aspects. So I think there's still an opportunity for us to do that, and to be able to provide you all with an effective document for discussion and decision-making. But obviously, there will be some research, and obviously, we will have to weigh the pros and cons about how you all will choose to move forward with said ordinance.
Thank you, all right. The motion is to direct the city manager and the city attorney's office to research and prepare a draft ordinance for council consideration that addresses the unlawful operation of electric bicycles, e-motocycles, and off-highway vehicles such as ATVs, i-minors. Will the clerk take a roll call vote?
Mayor Douglas has his hand raised.
Oh, I apologize, thank you for drawing my attention to that. Mayor Douglas?
Thank you. I would say, if we could look at what Aurora has done, they have an ordinance with vehicles as far as driving off the highway, I mean, off-road vehicles, e-bikes. And so if we could look at what they have already drafted, maybe that would help guide us to, you know, make a stricter policy around what is already out there. Just makes it a lot easier, so if we get the information, if we decide we will make it stronger, we can, but at least there's a guideline through the city of Aurora. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Douglas. Any other discussion? All right, now let's call the roll. Thank you.
Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we have another unanimous vote. We move on now to Commerce City Connected publication public statement. Councilmember Madera is the sponsor, and Councilmember Dukes and Councilmember Ford are the co-sponsors. Councilmember Madera, would you like to introduce your item?
Yeah, so I wanted to provide staff an opportunity to clarify some things that I saw on social media. There's a lot of false narratives out there saying that the election was rigged, and you know, speaking to issues with the Commerce City Connected. I'm sure there's a lot of residents like me who hadn't received the Connected yet and weren't really sure what was going on, so I'd like to open it up to staff to enlighten us.
Thank you, Councilmember Madera and council. As you all know, we've released a public statement, but I will read from that as well. "On Friday, September 26, the city learned that two candidate submissions were not received by staff because emails were flagged and quarantined by our email provider. The cybersecurity setting identified the emails as potential phishing or spoofing threats. The system recognizes similarities in email addresses and/or account names and therefore identifies them as real or perceived threats to protect the organization. Email spoofing and phishing is the number one source for cybersecurity compromise. While this was not due to staff error, we did extend our sincerest apologies to the affected candidates. We informed them of the steps that would be taken to address the matter. Monday last week, the earliest we could act, given our vendor was not available over the weekend, we worked to update the October Connected newsletter to include the two missing candidates' information. The online updated and republished version to our website immediately. We continue to work with the vendor throughout the day to find out the originally printed version that would have been delivered to over 25,000-plus homes was never released for delivery. With this news, the vendor was able to reprint the newsletter with updated information to be delivered this week. I and my employees across the department hold the election process and due process in the highest regard. After a thorough investigation and review into the matter, I can say unequivocally that those I entrust to support and inform the community did nothing intentional to disenfranchise, mislead the community, or interfere with the election. As I stated earlier, we regret the impact on the candidates and have taken the steps to address the matter, but more so, we've taken steps to ensure the fairness and integrity of the election process."
Thank you, City Manager Rogers. Councilmember Chacon?
I was one of the candidates affected, I'm also a sitting council member. I can understand if it was an accident or issue such as that, but what my biggest concern is the level of negligence of even responding to me. I have not received an apology directly from you or from staff. I have yet to actually even receive so much as an emailed response from Travis. I find it incredibly disrespectful as somebody that's already in this space when it could take a phone call, a quick conversation, or simply an email to reach out to me in the respectful way that I always treat everybody, including staff. Again, I could understand if this was a mistake, but my concern is the level of negligence that's starting to interfere in the types of elections that we're having in Commerce City, and ultimately, the culture of favoritism that I've been noticing within staff and how they address other council members. It seems very cordial between some other council members, and I personally do feel neglected. I wish that it could have just took an email, and I'll be honest, the only person that was ever completely diligent every single time that I've ever worked with him was Dylan. Everyone else does not talk to me, they will not email me, and now I can't even get a phone call just for a candidate thing that I did submit in time. So not only did it disparage me in the initial space, even on website that I said I didn't turn it in when I have, and I'm my own committee of my own space and my own candidate profile, that I just find it negligent that the city staff is playing that type of favoritism that now is impacting the election. So I would hope that staff reevaluate that this does have impact on election laws and somewhat of an interference. So please, if it is an accident, pay attention and do your jobs, because all you had to do is just call me."
Councilmember Kim?
Mr. Rogers, how many times did staff actually follow up with candidates with regards to making sure the information was given to them?
I believe you're asking a question about what steps did we take in advance of the actual deadline. There was an initial email that was sent to the candidates, and then there was an additional one the day before the deadline, in which we reached out to make those aware who had not submitted that the deadline was forthcoming.
And just out of curiosity, did anybody of the candidates follow up with a phone call? If they, obviously, if there was an initial email that went out, and obviously candidates did actually respond back, and there's another email that goes out, did candidates actually make a follow-up with a phone call to ensure that they received the information?
I am not aware of a phone call being made to my staff.
So, can you define doxing for me?
I think generally speaking, doxing is the sharing of information, both sensitive and/or necessary of individuals or staff that's being placed online in support of an issue or a matter to drive a result.
So after you found out the information on Friday, I believe it was Friday, Thursday or Friday, whatever day it was, right, so it was the online version versus the actual printed version. Printed version never went out, obviously, I understand online versions go out faster because it's online. And as someone who's been in the IT profession for over 20-plus years, I understand the Microsoft quarantine, although 10 years ago, it's roughly been about 10 years now since quarantine actually came out versus the additional where it was spam or junk mail. And, you know, I would think that as a candidate, I would follow up with a phone call. So my question to you, though, is more so, after this incident occurred, did anything else occur on Friday?
I'm aware of concerns that were shared with me by staff in regards to information not necessarily expected to be published, to be published. I think that kind of just goes back to understanding what transpired, and we can always have a very robust and very deliberative conversation about what occurred about the publishing of information with respect to staff. Nothing in our investigation, once again, going back to the crux of this, did anything wrong to disenfranchise or to mislead the community, and I stand by that.
Was there any public safety concern regarding individuals that were mentioned?
I think, you know, that's an appropriate conversation to be had, that may be one more best directed to you by others, but once again, I think there's avenues in which we can have that conversation to address some of those questions.
So going back to my question prior to that, was there anybody, whether the candidates themselves, or did anybody else show up on a Friday to discuss the problems?
It's my understanding that yes, my staff was approached.
Would you be able to share that? If it's best said in executive session, we could go that route, however, I just want to make sure it's publicly known.
So you referenced executive session, obviously, we'd have to have an exception to the open meetings laws, so I would need to understand exactly what...
I'm trying to understand what occurred Friday altogether with regards to, obviously, there was an initial email that went out, there was candidates up here as well that talked about how they did not, you know, their potential malicious intent, that, you know, even online I've read it was somewhat treasonous, treasonous, I think was the word, and malfeasance was used, I don't know why, but there were certain words that were used. And obviously, I would also want to understand from, you know, folks regarding, was there anything else, did the candidates reach out on Friday? Did they come forward on Friday? Did somebody come forward to talk to staff on Friday? Did anything happen on Friday that was a problem?
So everything that I've heard you ask is a fact-based question on what transpired on Friday. If you are asking if it is appropriate to have a conversation in executive session, then we would have to understand what exception to the open meetings law we would go into an executive session for. I'm not hearing one, I'm not hearing any request for legal advice, I'm not hearing a request to have a conversation.
So I'm good there, then?
Okay.
Mr. Rogers, can you please explain?
Thank you, Mr. Kim. I appreciate it, your time is up, we can rotate back to you.
I'll rotate back.
We'll rotate back to you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Douglas?
I'm not really sure what to say here, at all. I was one of those candidates, there were three silhouettes that came up, and it seemed not coincidental. And, so, you know, all of this is very difficult, very difficult. And, you know, I just don't know what to think, I really don't. So, I just want everyone to know that I was one of those silhouettes. I did get my information in, I got it in three minutes before the deadline. I would have assumed with this being an election year, with people running that have ran before and gotten profiles in, that if those profiles were not received, that it would have been nice to receive some kind of inquiry as to, are you not going to submit a candidate profile? Then I could have said, yeah, I turned one in, so you need to find it. I have it emailed, time stamped, all of it. But that didn't happen, and I guess I am the fool, because I made the assumption on my part that people would do their jobs. And it was surprising when I found out that what had transpired, and I did make a phone call and attached, did not receive a timely response. So, we talked it out, but it is what it is, and it happened, so thank you. I do appreciate the fact that you made an effort to get the paper reprinted before it was too late. I don't feel this should have happened in the first place.
Councilmember Ford?
Thank you. You know, City Manager Rogers, I heard you say that you did an investigation, there was no intent behind this. What my concern is, and it seems like Councilmember Kim kind of tiptoed around it, was treatment of certain staff members on Friday by certain council members, and whether or not that was a violation of council policy. And so I would pose that to the city attorney, do we need to have an executive session to sort that out? Because I don't want staff members who we are not directly over being mistreated by council members.
That is a good question. CP25, as you all know, council adopted, it formalizes a process for a complaint to be submitted, and that is something that has been established by prior councils before this body. To the extent that there are concerns, I think the appropriate avenue would be to have anyone that is concerned look at Council Policy 25 and the complaint process. I do not believe that it's appropriate to have an executive session, in large part because CP25 intentionally is created, it creates an investigatory process... because CP25 intentionally is created, it creates an investigatory process based off of a specific complaint, and it establishes that there's a third-party magistrate that reviews that complaint as opposed to council hearing, you know, one person's opinion versus another person's opinion and making a decision on the fly. Under CP25, an investigation is conducted. That investigation is then, the findings are provided to this council to then make a determination on what the appropriate action is.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Dara.
Yeah, I just want to remind council that there's no formal motion that will be taken during this time. As City Attorney alluded to, proper avenue is to submit a complaint via Council Policy 25 and an investigation to take place for any misconduct on part of city council members. And, you know, I encourage people to do so if they felt that, you know, council policy was broken. The purpose of this was to address the defamatory statements that were made against certain staff members and, you know, to protect the integrity of democracy because, you know, we've seen this title playbook before. And, you know, as it was in the 2020 federal elections, people were sued for defamation for these statements. And, you know, it just, it brings us to a question, what staff does, and they go above and beyond. We have the best running our elections and being part of two of them already. I can 100% say that confidently. And, you know, as far as quarantine and IT issues, I've had the same issue with my council coroner article where I've, you know, we have iPads, not the best to type up an article, so type it from my personal computer, try emailing it from my personal email because I don't have, you know, the city email on my personal computer. And, you know, when I didn't receive a response because staff is always on point saying, receive, thank you, I followed up, sent an email, called, text, and they let me know that they didn't receive it. And then they looked for it, found that it was quarantine, and they can work with IT to find that. But, you know, at the end of the day, you don't know what you don't know. If they didn't, that email never got to staff because it was quarantine, then they have no way of seeing it until they get the quarantine email, which, you know, I don't know how long it is explicitly. I think it's like a week, it seems like, for whenever I've had anything quarantined. And so, you know, the point is, two wrongs don't make a right. There was a lot of, you know, there was a mistake. Council took, or staff took action to address that mistake and correct it as soon as they could. And, you know, for the people that were affected, it never seems fast enough, right? And so people reacted, but what we put out into the community reflects on the city as a whole. And part of council's job is to represent the city and fix problems. And the way to fix problems is not to blast things on social media, mistreat staff, or any of those avenues, right? The best way to deal with something is pick up a phone, call the person, get all the facts, find out what happened. And, you know, by the emails that staff had sent, they were made aware, and they worked over the weekend to remedy it. I got the connected the other day, and all the profiles were in the connected. So, and that was the purpose of allowing staff to have a public statement because there was a lot of noise going on around this, and staff tries to stay out of, you know, any elections, right? They didn't respond to social media or get into, put out a public statement like we should have. And this was just an opportunity for staff to explain that to council and the public who may not have known what was going on or the facts of circumstances behind what they may have seen on social media.
Thank you, Councilmember Dara. Councilmember Dukes.
Thank you, Councilmember Dara, for bringing this forward, and I'm happy to be a co-sponsor of this. I just want to add to some of the comments in a sense of, you know, as a candidate, as anyone's running for office, I can understand the disappointment where we're not seeing your profile in the connected. And I can understand the frustration there where you can feel a certain type of way. But what I can't understand was how you react. We all have our, we have to react in a professional way to address any issues. As mentioned in Council Policy 25, I would, you know, if there's folks that feel wronged by what council or any conversations take place, we have an avenue for that so that we can do a full investigation and due process so we could get to the bottom of any behavior that needs to change. I do want to thank the city staff, Travis and Jason and Dylan, for your professionalism. It's not easy to be caught in this type of world spin. It's not easy to have your name and everything thrown on social media in comments like, this is illegal, we need your help to stop corruption. That's a, that was a post. And why are you, why are you targeting women, specifically BIPOC women? It's stuff that you don't want to see your name associated with, especially when there's like five BIPOC candidates in the connected. So, again, I appreciate your professionalism. I appreciate your willingness to continue to serve this city. I want to just continue to call out the fact that what I heard from City Manager Rogers tonight is that through our cybersecurity protocol with phishing, which is a real issue, I would never advocate to decrease our cybersecurity, but through that, it caught up emails that look like phishing. That happens in my personal work, that happens with some candidates or some residents that try to meet with me, and I had to go in the junk and say, hey, I'm sorry that this has been in quarantine for so long, please forgive me, I still love to meet with you. It happens. The other thing I want to really call out is that as council members, whether running or not running for reelection or in a campaign, it is critically important for us not to use our bully pulpit to try to bully staff. It is important for us to use our positions, not to try to ask for additional outreaches to say, you should have did this more. Because to Councilmember Dara's point, in a democracy, all candidates are treated equal, and all candidates have to have the same level of deadlines and the same level of outreach. Once we start tweaking that and saying we deserve different levels of outreach, that creates an imbalance with our opportunities for fair elections. The last point is I asked City Attorney Zarzaki, if we think about elections and we think about the connected itself, is this a requirement for the city to even provide? That's my question.
No, it is not a requirement for the city to provide.
And so if it's not a requirement, very similar to the videos we used to provide, we can do away with this as an opportunity. The goal for the connected is to, it is a nice-to-have-as-a-city effort to try to inform all residents who are not on maybe social media, we don't have our own newspaper, but it is not a requirement, and it does not interfere with the elections because this is a nice-to-have, which I enjoy being a part of that. But it does not in any way connect to like unfair elections because, again, this is not a requirement, it's a nice-to-have, this is something we provide for our residents. I would hate for us to have to move away from not providing this because of, I guess, because of too many conditions that are creating complications for our city staff. It's just not worth it for our city staff to endure any political pressure when they're just trying to do the best they can. Again, thank you, Councilmember Dara, for putting this forward. I'm happy to be a part of this conversation, but thanks for putting this forward.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dukes. Before I go to Councilmember Chacon and Councilmember Kim for their second round comments, I would like to comment. There was an, let me just ask a question first. What is the proofing process of the newsletter? Who all is involved in proofing the newsletter before it's either posted online or printed?
I can't speak to that level of detail as to each step by step. I am more than willing to get that to the council.
I think we have both Jason and Travis in the room right now. Perhaps one of them could answer.
I think I'd rather allow that information to be shared with council once we've been able to ensure that we have hit every step as opposed to trying to detail it on the back of a napkin or at the top of mind. So we'll make sure to get that information to you all about the deliberate steps that is with in-house as well as our vendor.
All right. Thank you very much. There was an email that went out broadly, broad distribution on Thursday. That same Thursday, it was forwarded by Reunion Metro District to all of the homeowners. By Friday, I had received a call in the afternoon or a text in the afternoon from one of my constituents asking why one of the candidates had not presented, had not provided a profile because it clearly said on the photo that the person had not provided a profile by the deadline. I wondered if it was just an online mistake, so I came to City Hall to see if the newspaper had been printed yet. I was on the phone with the candidate in question. I saw the communications manager, had them talk to each other on my cellphone, on speaker. And then I went upstairs and talked to one of the assistant city managers. I won't convey his reaction here, but it was disappointing to me. So I went down to see the deputy city attorney because the city attorney was gone in the afternoon to see what could be done in an urgent fashion because we're in the midst of an election. If it's simply fixing an online website or correcting a link in an email, that could be done by the end of the day easily, in my mind. I have been a public affairs consultant. I have done campaigns. I have done any number of things. I've done marketing, I've done public relations. I have worked in this arena for a really, really, really long time, and I know how to solve these problems quickly. The next day, that night, I believe it was, after we heard an explanation, I replied and asked what, eventually I asked what reissue meant because that was what conveyed to us it would be reissued. By Sunday, I asked again what reissue meant, and I also was concerned about the timeliness. And I want you to know that as a candidate, this affected me very personally. Yes, I happen to know the two council members who this happened to, but more importantly, I've been a candidate, and I have represented other candidates, and I thought, this could be devastating, this could be a death knell for any campaign. That's how I responded to it. And I know that any one of us up here on this podium would feel the exact same way if it had happened to them. I did not get a reply to my emails. On Tuesday, I was copied in an email, or the email was sent to me by another constituent because when she looked at the email link for the newsletter, it still hadn't been corrected on Tuesday. On Tuesday afternoon, she sent me another email and said it had not now been corrected. So between Thursday and Tuesday was a considerable amount of time. The deadline was the 11th. This all occurred on the 25th. That's two full weeks that anyone might have been informed that their material was missing. I, as I said, take it at almost as personally as these two candidates do because I know what it means to be a candidate on all levels of government, from president on down. I've been involved in all of those, and it is, it just, I appreciate that we're getting the remarks tonight. I'm glad you called it forward. I'm glad that there is an apology, but I don't know how you put the genie back in the bottle. Councilmember Chacon.
The mayor was first. Mayor Douglas.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Douglas.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah, I was, when I saw the notice of council business and this was on there, I think this could have been handled a lot different. It's need to come to this forum to bring other council members in there to address this was necessary. I've been in several campaigns as a candidate and know the information that's brought forward. If something is not done at a certain timeline, I get an email or a phone call saying, hey, we haven't received your information. Simple as that. And I could have taken care of this. My question I have, was there two publications that went out or was it fixed in time to catch it so it only went out once?
I'll be gladly to answer that question, Mayor. So what occurred on Thursday evening was the delivery by email of the online version to 843 online subscribers.
Okay.
Between Thursday and Monday, when we republished, and you all received an email, since we're talking about emails, you all received an email from me with respect to what had occurred and what we were doing with reprinting or reissuing that. So I just want that to be recognized that when Monday came, we had jumped on it and had that addressed by the middle of the day with respect to it. Now, I say 843 online subscribers. Within those 843 online subscribers, between Thursday and Monday, only 64 had opened that attachment. And none had received any of the hard print version of that, which, as I again shared with you all that evening, that we were able to catch before it going out of the loading dock per se, and were able to reprint and to submit those back out, get those submitted back out into the community.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, because I wasn't clear on if publication of 25 already went out and they were going to reissue another 25,000. So thanks for making that clear. I know, and like I said, in the past, you know, when it comes to the campaign, and yes, the city doesn't have to get involved, but, you know, this, as far as a democracy, you want to make sure things are fair. And when you have candidates that are involved with the election, you want to make sure that it appears fair to all. I think it's great that the city is involved this way. There's more cities that go beyond this. We used to do things different here, but, you know, it is what it is. So, like I said, this could have been taken care of behind the scenes. If that was, if that's what was processed and done, I think, you know, that was fine. But to bring this to notice of council business to involve other, you know, I mean, how much time would we spend on this? So just know going forward that, because I know, being a candidate, several times myself, winning and losing, that elections, they do reach out. They do know, hey, if I haven't received someone's candidate, I'm going to, I will contact them. That is, that's part of the job because they had to make sure whether it's, if a notice goes out, they had to make a phone call to the county, you know, that's, that's another process as well. But all this is done within the election process, the election calendar time. So I guess lesson learned, next time, make sure. And then when it comes to the quarantine, I had a couple quarantines, but it showed right up on my, on my email, hey, this is quarantine. So I knew what was quarantine. But that's only been the last few days. That was not between the period of September 11th. And until that Thursday, I didn't have any quarantine issues. So this is in the last, since then, I've had quarantine issues, but before that, I didn't have any. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Chacon.
Thank you. For absolute transparency, I did email and I did call. That is why I'm actually not having the same... That is why I'm actually not having the same treatment, frankly, from staff as apparently other candidates are having. That is my concern, is that it feels negligent. I have emailed, I have called, I have those timestamps as well too, and no one has reached out. And I did have prior to this other interaction through that Gmail. So if we do need an executive session, I would be interested in seeing the email logs or the call logs about how this is quarantined or that this doesn't happen to other candidates in the future. Because I will be honest, it's looking absolutely negligent specifically towards me, and that is actually my concern. And as an indigenous woman and first in this space, I don't take a razor lightly. So I would have just appreciated that just a phone call, just an email or a return to any of my emails before because it took two and a half weeks. And the very first person to call me back was the city attorney. So I'm concerned about just the city staff absolutely being negligent towards me. And yes, I, because I have reached out and I haven't had any calls back, I did ask for the civic engagement of my constituents. If they're interested and want to see my profile because I had turned it in, to please call city staff so that they could actually release it. And it took the two weeks for that to happen. So I would ask that city staff just do their due diligence and actually reach out to people. And if we need to put it on this type of city council business, so be it. But this shouldn't happen to any council member and especially a sitting council member you could have talked to. That's why I find this negligent and disrespectful because I've done everything that I could have possibly did to reach out to city staff and did not receive an email back.
Thank you, Councilmember Chacon. City Manager Rogers, you had your hand up. Did you want to say something else? And I'm thinking here that since this was to be an opportunity for your statement, but also inevitably was going to result in people wanting to speak, particularly the candidates, particularly people who were involved in various ways, that there was going to be that to occur. But since everyone has had a round, I don't know that we need to do a second round. And I would simply say that if you have something you want to say, then we can take it from there and move on to the next items on the agenda because we have a very full agenda and we're still in notice council business.
I think you all heard me say, I am, on behalf of the organization, express our sincerest apologies for what occurred. If we could have addressed it, we would have when we knew it. And I apologize for that. I also stand by that my team did what was within their process and their powers. And both can be right. What I can also say, as we all have heard, the comments that were made, the comments that were shared online, publicly, even around this today, you all have policies that speak to what? That speaks to if there's displeasure, if there's concern about performance, contact me first, foremost, not my staff. Come to me. I am your employee collectively. I'm here to assist you or others to address that. It does not help when that is directly involving my staff that, once again, do not have the intersection of being able to address your concerns in a timely fashion. So use me as the resource that is identified in your policies to effectively address a matter sooner than later and within timeframes that I can help to guide expectations and be transparent to you all when we have that information so it doesn't lead to perceptions that are realities or realities of what has occurred. So I am here as a tool collectively for the council to address these type of situations. But once again, I say it again, we understand the impact and we made it right and will continue to address the issues as they go forward. But I had to say that.
All right. Thank you very much. And I want to then emphasize that the communication lines are open and are now open. So please come back to us if there are any other issues. I'm going to move on now.
I just have one quick statement, just one quick statement, one quick statement. That's all I'm going to say. If, City Manager, if there was, if there was any public safety issue, issues as far as with your staff as to what occurred, I want to directly say I am sorry to that, to those staff members. Nobody else will probably say it up here, but I will say I am sorry that that had occurred, that the fact that the information was posted out there, the fact that there could be a true potential harmful issue that could have occurred. That is all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kim. I would also like you to respect the presiding officer. Thank you. I'm moving on now to housing units in community development pipeline. That information stemmed, this is, I'm sponsor. Councilmember Douglas is co-sponsor. So I will introduce the motion. I'm not introducing a motion. There is no motion. On September 22nd, we had a housing needs assessment presentation from a consultant on, Councilmember Douglas raised an interesting point that evening about housing units in the pipeline. The next day, I sent an email to the interim community development director and requested the number of housing units in the pipeline because it's difficult to track on the monthly spreadsheet that any of us, any of us in the community have access to. He said that he would definitely look into it, but it might take quite a while to pull up that information. So by the following Tuesday, I thought, wow, I may be exceeding the one hour limit. We have a council policy that if anything takes longer than one hour, that you have to get council permission to use staff to look into the item you want that might take longer than an hour. Therefore, I put this motion in with Councilmember Douglas on that same afternoon. And I informed the interim community development director why I was putting a motion in. It wasn't to rush him, it was just to formalize and get the staff to, I'm sorry, to get the council to agree to whatever amount of time it would take to find out what's in the, what's in the pipeline. And we received it that afternoon. So that afternoon, we did get the table. The city council has that table. The table said there were about 5,000 total units in the, in the pipeline. So I would not be making a motion to request the information because we have received the information, we received it last week. Thank you very much. City Manager Rogers, you have a comment.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to make sure that you all received the updated email from interim Director Sutherland stating that we were actually having to reevaluate the numbers because there may be some overlapping count. So the table that you all received, I would hold off on sharing anything within that because we do not know whether or not that number is accurate.
That information has been shared by me because I received it as an answer to my question that I asked. So of course, I shared it to the community. So at this point, we know what the information is. It was shared by our staff last week. When do you think we're going to have any changes to this?
That's a good question, ma'am. We're being more due diligent, and this is not to speak ill of staff, but I think the complexity of the numbers and how that came across from our systems, we're double checking, and we've already found some deficiencies or inaccuracies. And that comes with where we're having to pull from multiple systems to get to the crux of the argument. That being said, obviously, we have policy that speaks about, you know, as you were saying, probably as I stepped away, that right, no more than an hour's worth of time, there should be a discussion amongst the body about what should be moved forward. And I guess to ensure what we're looking for, maybe it is worth a discussion by this body to ask the question, what is this data going to support?
Okay, okay. I can answer that question very easily. We were doing a housing needs assessment. We know what the existing housing is. We know what they were talking about in terms of what we need. But what is actually in the pipeline that is being processed right now through the system? Applications, free applications, permits, et cetera, everything, reviews and so forth. Once it is administratively approved, it is removed from the spreadsheet. So for any of us laypeople, to be able to keep track of how many different units are actually waiting to put shovel in the ground is something that would obviously impact our evaluation of Commerce City's housing needs.
So that's helpful. So understanding the existing approved pipeline that is in effect either under construction or approved, yet not permit issued. We're not looking prospectively into the future is what I'm understanding.
Actually, I took the exact words from Mr. Sutherland when he replied to me, and that was in my motion. So if you hang on for just a minute, I will pull my motion up again and I will ask the city council to approve my motion that Councilmember Douglas made with me. And it is using interim community development director Sutherland's words. Direct staff to provide the number of units in the planning process, units approved but not applied for permits, and units in the permit process, and if possible, by unit type by October 13th, 2025 study session. That is the motion. Do I have a second? Councilmember Douglas?
Yes, I'll second that, please.
All right. Thank you very much. And is there any discussion?
Councilmember Dukes has his hand up.
Yes, Councilmember Dukes.
Yes, I, so I do have discussion on that. And I do want to just mention again, in council policy, it is not appropriate for city council members, this is for our city staff, to approach you and ask for information without connecting with the city manager prior. The city manager is our point of contact. And what is becoming evidently clear is that we, on some, on council, are approaching city staff outside of our protocols and our procedures. That's not okay. As far as this, and I would, as a council member, it needs to stop. So city staff, City Manager Rogers, please talk with your team about, it has to come through you because this is not okay to get information without you being involved in the discussion. As far as the motion, I still do not understand the intent and what policy this is going to provide. What I saw was a post of a chart that was complicated in the sense that it wasn't clear on explaining what the units actually meant, nor the timeline, nor what it meant to talk through zoning. So for zoning, for example, it could be up to 1,000 units. That does not mean that it's going to be 1,000 units because it depends on the market conditions and it depends on when things are going to break ground. So by providing data without context, it can lead to a specific narrative or it can have a really great, a great dialogue that we may need in our, in our community. So I'm curious on this motion, what narrative or what dialogue is this to promote? Towards what policy are we trying to implement or change? That is a question for you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dukes. I'm not writing a story here. I'm trying to do city business for a housing needs assessment that we have all agreed to. We had a consultant who brought information forward to us. He skipped a step. He didn't include what's in the pipeline. If it's 500 homes or 500 or 5,000 homes, I merely wanted the number. And as for reprimanding me, sir, I have here, City Manager Rogers is copied in my question. Do you, to my call, do you happen to know how many housing units are in the community development pipeline? I see quite a few on the spreadsheet. Thank you. All my best, Susan. I think it's, should be a simple answer was my thinking is that it would actually be there. It would be there.
But I still don't have a clarification of what you are needing this information for. What I heard you say is that we did a housing assessment and you feel like they skipped a step for a pipeline.
Correct.
What I'm not understanding and hearing you say is, how are you wanting to define the pipeline? Is it five years out? Is it five years prior? Because 5,000 units can have different contexts. If it's 5,000 units in the next 20 years or 5,000 units in the past 10 years.
It is, what is in our pipeline? What is in our pipeline? It was a simple question. That's what I'd like to know. Housing units submitted, approved, or pending, which have not yet been constructed. No shovel to the ground. I thought, and I believe, that it will augment our housing needs assessment. Without that category filled in, how do we know how many homes we need in Commerce City? We just had the housing needs assessment on September 22nd. I asked the question on September 23rd, Councilmember Dukes. It was very timely. The question was very timely and followed Councilmember Douglas's question the night before. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Which is, direct staff to provide the number of units in the planning process, units approved but not applied for permitted, and units in the permit process, and if possible, by unit type by the October 13th, 2025 study session. You may take a roll call.
Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you.
All right. The vote is tied, so the motion fails.
It was tied.
Oh, no, it's not tied. It was 5-4. The motion fails to learn what's in Commerce City's pipeline. All right. Let's have presentations. Oil and Gas Monthly Update.
Good evening. I'm Melody Mascrene as a Sustainability Manager for Commerce City, and I'm here to do the Oil and Gas Update presentation. Current applications, there are no current oil and gas applications. Oil and gas notice updates, no oil and gas notice updates occurred over September 24th and October 24th, 2025. Adams County Oil and Gas Updates, these are from our contact at Adams County. Oil and gas operators within Adams County are starting to send out chemical disclosures to residents within 2,000 feet of an oil and gas operation to comply with House Bill 22-1348. That House bill created enhanced oversight of chemicals used in downhole oil and gas operations. More information will be relayed about this process as it develops. Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment Air Pollution Control Division is having some public meetings. CDPHG will be holding the following public meetings. Emission Control Regulations for Priority Toxic Air Contaminants on Wednesday, October 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00, and Saturday, November 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Registration is required for this. It's on their website. A registration is required for this, it's on their website, the link's right there, and if you'd like to attend these virtual offerings. This is the Suncor Environmental Excedence Report for the period of July 15th through August 15th. There are two recordable events, two exceedances. They occurred on July 21st. One was due to a reflective paint they needed to apply that was noticed during the, the state was doing their inspection of the plant. And the second one had to do with the, an engine replacement that was, they weren't notified, the state was not notified. Any questions?
Thank you. Do any council members have a comment? All right, I do. Thank you very much. I did note that, I think it was Saturday morning, that I heard someone speak to the Natural Resource District, which was approved in the southwest corner of Reunion Ridge, wasn't approved, it was brought forward some time ago. That was one of 11 sites that were proposed for Commerce City at one point in 2018, 2019, 2020, and then by 2021, we had new oil and gas regulations. So, because of that, those sites have dropped off the map, so that's very good. I would also like to point out that it's really wonderful to learn that there is a Fuels Impact Enterprise Fund that Commerce City may be qualified for, and it's for an interesting reason, which is that we have five of the six fuel supply depots in Commerce City that are in Adams County. There is a Fuels Impact Enterprise Fund that is worth, has $10 million in it annually through 2020, through 2031. I'm very happy that former Councilmember Craig Hurst provided the information to me, and I was able to arrange for a Zoom meeting with staff so that they could learn more about it as well. So, hopefully, we will see some important information that will come forward from that that will be of benefit to Commerce City, because of course, we are impacted by those five fuel depots, and I'm not sure that anyone even realized that we had five in total. So, it's very important information. It goes all over, either by rail, by pipeline, or by truck. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mascherinas. Thank you very much. All right, we move on now to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, or non-controversial. These items are presented to council on a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item off the Consent Agenda for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are 17 items on the Consent Agenda. Do any council members wish to remove an item? Councilmember Jaco.
I wanted to remove for reading Proclamation 25-027 and Proclamation 25-029.
All right, thank you very much. Does anyone else? All right.
I have one.
Who spoke? Oh, Councilmember Douglas?
Yes, it's Resolution 2025-130 and Ordinance 27-27. Thank you.
Councilmember Jaco, could you give me yours again, please?
Proclamation 25-027 and Proclamation 25-029.
All right, and Councilmember Douglas, is 2025-130 in ordinance or resolution?
Mayor.
Pardon me?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mayor Douglas.
It's a resolution, Resolution 2025-130, and then Ordinance 27-27.
Right, okay, thank you very much. So, City Clerk Garland, would you read everything but Proclamation 25-027, 25-029, Resolution 2025-130, and Ordinance 27-27? Thank you.
The minutes of the September 15th, 2025, regular meeting, minutes of the September 22nd, 2025.
Councilmember, sorry, it appears I haven't asked for a motion and a second.
Oh, my apologies.
That's all right. I led you astray. May I have a motion, please? Councilmember Teeter?
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda as amended.
All righty, and Councilmember Kim?
Second.
All righty, we have a first and a second now. Will the clerk read the titles and take a roll call vote? Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes of the September 15th, 2025, regular meeting, minutes of the September 22nd, 2025, special meeting. Ordinance 2684, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of Great Outdoors Colorado Funds, the amount of $500,000 for Sand Creek Regional Greenway and the Wetlands Park Destination Project, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2694, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by appropriating unencumbered fund balance in the Commerce City Brighton School District CCBSD Use Tax Fund in the amount of $2,571,320 for specific jointly used recreation facilities, and authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2704, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of grant funding from Adams County in the amount of $805,750 for multiple parks, recreation, and golf improvements, and the authorization of the expenditures thereof. Ordinance 2708, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of grant funding from Department of Local Affairs in the amount of $10,025 for Police Department Community Service Projects, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2721, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of Derby Plan area funding from the Urban Renewal Authority in the amount of $325,000 for the 72nd Place and Monocle Intersection Reconstruction Project, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2729, an ordinance amending Section 2-3009 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to modify the Quorum requirements for the Environmental Policy and Innovation Commission. Ordinance 2730, an ordinance amending Section 2-3007 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to modify the Quorum requirements for the Senior Commission. Proclamation 25-030, proclamation declaring October 2025 as Manufacturing Month in Commerce City, Colorado. Resolution 2025-086, a resolution finding substantial compliance of the annexation petition in case AN25-0003, known as the Commerce Place Annexation, and setting a public hearing to determine eligibility for such annexation. Resolution 2025-150, a resolution in support of South Adams County Fire Protection District ballot issue 6A. Resolution 2025-153, a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an amendment to the agreement for professional services with the community firm doing business as Economic Defense Project. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. Councilmember Jaco, proclamation 25-027.
Oh, you got to give it to her. Do you want me to read the entire proclamation for domestic violence? Or the indigenous one?
Well, 027 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Yeah. Okay, this, I have it up on here, too. Thank you.
Is Kim Messina in the chambers?
There we go, thank you.
I don't think so. And Kim Messina is the victim's advocate staff, and so, Councilmember Jaco, we'll read the proclamation, please. Thank you.
Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive and devastating crime that affects individuals of every race, age, gender identity, and income level, leaving lasting impacts on survivors, families, and communities, and whereas in the United States, on average, of 20 people experience intimate partner physical violence every minute, equating to more than 10 million victims a year, and whereas one in four women and one in nine men will experience domestic violence in their lifetime on average, three men and, three women in America are killed by their intimate partner every day, and whereas one in three Americans report witnessing an incident of domestic violence, and children who grow up in violent homes are significantly higher risk of experiencing abuse, neglect, and long-term trauma, and whereas domestic violence undermines the stability and health of families, which are the foundation of strong communities, and who often leave survivors struggling with emotional, physical, and financial harm, and whereas the economic impact of domestic violence is staggering, costing the nation billions annually in healthcare, law enforcement, court expenses, shelter services, foster care, lost productivity, and other related costs, and whereas preventing and responding to domestic violence requires a united, coordinated effort involving law enforcement, advocates, healthcare providers, educators, faith communities, and engaged citizens working together to break the cycle of abuse, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to honor the courage and resilience of survivors, to remember those who have lost their lives to domestic violence, and to recommit ourselves as a community to education, prevention, advocacy, and support to all who are impacted. Now, therefore, as mayor and the city council, and City of Commerce City, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call upon all citizens to unite in raising awareness, promoting healthy relationships, supporting survivors, and working together to eliminate domestic violence from our community.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Jaco and a second. Councilmember Douglas, all those in favor? Wait, no, we're not doing it that way. Please do a roll call vote.
Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vote is unanimous to declare October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I now move to Resolution 25-029, and I believe that will be Jordan Roberts, Senior Policy Analyst, along with Councilmember Jaco, to read the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Protam and council.
Whereas the City of Commerce City recognizes that the indigenous people of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial, and?
Whereas the city recognizes and renounces the tragic historical events in the United States and Colorado's past, and honors indigenous peoples' history, sacrifices, and rich contributions to our community and nation, and?
Whereas the City of Commerce City is committed to eradicating the systemic racism towards indigenous peoples, which has resulted in chronic cycles of poverty, and economic health, education, and social disparities, and?
Whereas the city supports the efforts of indigenous peoples to continue to fight for their sovereignty of their land, their right to exist, and their access to opportunities that have long been denied to their ancestors, and?
Whereas the city recognizes that the observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day does not do enough to right the injustices and treatment of indigenous peoples from the founding of the United States even today, as indigenous people continue to fight against the stealing of tribal lands, right to self-governance, and threats to their sacred spaces and clean air and water.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Commerce City, Colorado, hereby declares October 13th, 2025, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Commerce City, and encourages all residents to educate themselves on the rich history and culture of indigenous peoples in Colorado by supporting local authors, filmmakers, poets, and artists, speak with their indigenous neighbors about their families' histories, uplift the voices of the indigenous communities wherever they exist, and be good stewards of the lands on which we are all still occupy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Jaco, you make a motion to approve that proclamation?
I do make a motion to approve.
And Councilmember Kim is the second. Thank you. All those, oh, roll call vote, please.
Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The vote is unanimous to declare October 13th Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you so much. We now go to Resolution 2025-130. Mayor Douglas?
Yes, thank you for allowing me to bring this forward. I just want to ask City Manager Rogers about this design work for the improvements on 68th Avenue between Colorado Boulevard and Brighton Boulevard.
What specific question might you have, Mayor?
Just what is this going to accomplish? I know it talks about drainage, lighting, pedestrian, just if you could walk us through a little bit of how that's going to, is that, is that improvements on 68th, or is that in conjunction with Colorado, Brighton Boulevard, and 68th, all three?
Yes, I'd like to let our Public Works Director Jenna Hahn to give a little bit more specificity as to what this will accomplish.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and City Council. So, you know, this particular resolution is to start the process for this project. So, we received a Revitalizing Main Streets grant to fund this design work and preliminary engineering design services for the improvements on 68th Avenue from Colorado to Brighton. So, we haven't created that design yet, but the scope of work would include multimodal improvements, drainage improvements, lighting improvements, various safety improvements, and making sure there's connectivity to the light rail station. So, as far as specific project details, we don't have that yet. That will come as a part of this project, which I would be remiss if I did not mention, will also include extensive public outreach led by our contractor.
Okay, so the $395,000, that is just to professional service to design all this, what you just talked about?
Correct.
Okay, so this could pretty much, to make those improvements, it might be in the millions, correct?
Yeah, the, the cost to improvements would be to be determined based on what WSB puts forth as the best solution for this area.
Okay, and what's the timeline to get that study back?
So, the preliminary engineering as well as the design, we have to spend the grant money by October 2027, so that's the timeline that you have in your contract, but that's not, or your council packet, excuse me, but that's not necessarily how long this will take. It really depends on what we find when we're doing preliminary design and environmental engineering.
Okay.
As we progress, though, you'll certainly be kept up to date. I know this is a high-profile project for a lot of our council members and community, so we'll update it on our website, as well as, I imagine, bring some verbal updates back to you all through our city manager during his report outs.
All right, I appreciate the highlights and drawing attention to who the affected parties and areas will solve this issue, so thank you.
Of course.
Councilmember Douglas?
Thank you. Thank you for answering those questions, answered a lot of the questions that I had. However, when this study or the design comes back, where do you anticipate the money coming from to complete this project?
Great.
This is over a quarter of a million dollars just for the design.
It is, yes. So, I personally anticipate, you know, keeping our eye out for applicable grant opportunities at the federal level over the coming year, as well as preparing capital investment program requests for future budget years for city manager and council consideration. But to your point, at this time, we only- But to your point, at this time, we only have the grant for the design and preliminary engineering services.
Yeah, because I look at it now, and it's actually closer to half a million than?
Well, the good news is getting the design done always helps us be more competitive with grants when we're shovel-ready in the industry that makes our applications look a little more favorable. So, this is certainly only step one, but hopefully we'll open ourselves up to other funding opportunities as we progress.
Did an RFP go out to see who would be interested in doing this design work?
Yes, we follow a competitive bid process through our procurement office.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other comments? All right, thank you very much, Isan.
Thank you.
All right, so I will read the resolution authorizing award of a professional services agreement for the design of improvements to 68th Avenue between Colorado Boulevard and Brighton Boulevard to WSB LLC. Is there a motion? Councilmember Kim?
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Madera?
Second.
All right, thank you very much.
Sorry, Mayor Protam, just to be clear, it's a motion to approve?
Correct.
Great.
And is there any other comment? All right. Will you call the roll, please?
Resolution 2025-130, a resolution authorizing award of a professional services agreement for the design of improvements to 68th Avenue between Colorado Boulevard and Brighton Boulevard to WSB LLC. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, can I have your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the vote is unanimous. Councilmember, Mayor Douglas, ordinance 2727.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to see how would this could be clarified for the economic development, community vitality. So, is City Manager Rogers, is Garrett Anderson in the audience to come forward and talk about this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, good evening.
Good evening.
Could you explain how this will benefit the economic development by forming these, by creating this, these two as the chapter?
Yes, certainly. Mayor Protam, members of the council, happy to be here tonight. Right now, the Economic Development Department and the Community Affairs Departments both function under the city manager's office. We feel that if restructuring would bring those out into their own department, it would increase the visibility and the drive, you know, help drive the long-term growth of both of those functions of the city right now. We do have a strong economic development plan, but we do need, we feel that this would be a better structure to help carry out that plan and have a standalone department that would allow staff to, you know, better implement the plans that we have in place.
Okay. And how will this help the city council reach those goals of closing those gaps of needed retail and commercial?
I think the primary thing that it does is sometimes with the budget priorities that are in the city manager's office can sometimes fluctuate. The, you know, bringing us out as an independent department helps create an annual budget that the city council can help direct, you know, specific goals and objectives for the for this department independently of the broader city manager's office.
Okay. By reading this, it says the creation of this new department would have a net zero impact to the city budget. So, are you saying that you can sustain what you do currently in budget, or you would be asking for more money?
Correct. We're just, what we're inferring with that comment is that there's no staff changes recommended, that the current budgets that are already being proposed and planned for the coming year will remain the same. This does not impact those projected numbers.
If I may, if I may, Mayor, to put that in addition to what Mr. Anderson said, as you all reviewed the 2026 budget, you reviewed it as an independent department, as a division under the city manager's office. The underlying base budget, which was increased due to tools and/or resources necessary to accomplish the Economic Development Strategic Plan, as well as what is going to be a comprehensive and robust communication strategy and plan, that will be moved out underneath of the city manager's budget and be a standalone in support of the economic vitality, economic and community vitality department. And you all have reviewed the documentation leading up to what would be the opening of the hearing next Monday throughout this past summer.
All right. Thank you for adding that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2727?
Yes, I'd like to make an ordinance, I'm sorry, I'd like to prove, I'd like to move an, I'd like to move this, a motion to approve ordinance 2727.
And is there a second? Councilmember Kim?
Second.
All right, thank you. Clerk, will you call the roll? Thank you.
Ordinance 2727, an ordinance amending Chapter Two of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code regarding administration of the city government by amending Section 2-4102 of Article Four of Chapter Two to create a Department of Economic and Community Vitality. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that is a unanimous vote. So, we wish the New Department of Economic and Community Vitality every success. Let's move on now to resolutions. Resolution 2025-149, the Civic Center remodel project. City Manager Rogers, would you please do a summary for the community as to what this entails?
What you have before you is a contract or a resolution for you to allow for me to negotiate a contract with a vendor that would perform a remodel of the existing east wing of the Civic Center to allow or facilitate the movement of departments for expansion and growth needs that have been identified with the increase in number of staff for said departments.
Okay, are you referring to the west side of City Hall?
It may be the west, yes.
All right.
You have always thought it the east, depending on how you look at it, but yes.
It is. How interesting. Okay. Then, those departments would be, sir?
The departments that are, will be occupying the space will be PD, HR, the new Economic and Community Vitality, City Manager's Office, Finance, and City Attorney's Office.
Thank you very much. Do any council members have questions for staff? All right, seeing none. I need a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 25-149. Councilmember Madera?
So moved.
Councilmember Ford?
Second.
Thank you. Will the clerk read the title and take a roll call vote? Thank you.
Resolution 2025-149, a resolution authorizing award of a construction manager general contractor contract for the Civic Center remodel project to France and Pittman Construction Company, Incorporated. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes six to three. All right, ordinances on first reading. Ordinance 2710, establishing a Parks Recreation and Golf Commission. Does anyone wish to describe this? Anyone who serves, any council member who serves on the commission? Or on the current committee, advisory committee? Nope, no one wants to say anything. All righty. So, apparently, there's going to be a new Parks Recreation and Golf Commission. It was formerly the Parks Recreation and Golf Advisory Committee, so this is an elevation. Councilmember Teeter, were you going to comment?
No, other than just to say that we're just basically changing it over to a commission. It's the same, everything's the same.
All right. Would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I move for approval of ordinance 2710. Council is seated.
All right, and a second? Councilmember Ford?
I'll second it.
Whoa, wait. Where's that coming from? Sorry, I called Councilmember Ford. And will the clerk read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance 2710, an ordinance amending the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, Chapter Two, Article Three, establishing the Parks Recreation and Golf Commission. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
That vote is unanimous. We now move on to ordinance 2723, Police Substation Construction Project. I will invite Teresa Wilson, the Director of Finance, to introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and City Council. During the August 18, 2025, City Council meeting, a motion was made and passed by City Council to move $16.3 million of unencumbered fund balance from the General Fund to the Capital Expenditures Fund for use on the police substation at 104th Avenue. As a result of that motion that was passed during the August 18 meeting, staff is bringing forward this proposed budget amendment to meet that need.
Thank you very much. Do any council members have questions or comments? All right, I do. I have questions with regards to the content of the police substation.
I would say, ma'am, this is a budget appropriation and not a discussion on the design of the substation. If there are questions that you have, I'm more than willing to have those with you within the appropriate forum, excuse me.
All right, I'm looking at the February 2024 presentation that was included in a consent calendar item for the police substation. That consent calendar item had to do with $900,000 for the design. We did not see the presentation, but reading this presentation, it says that it will be a fully functional station and that it is a police station, and it will eliminate the need to drive arrestees south to the headquarters, only to later drive them to Brighton. So, that's good. That part's good. However, my problem is this, that in 2023, we approved a police substation of 30,000 square feet. That was a vote of the City Council, and we approved that. I even made it part of my answer for the 2023 candidate questionnaire. When things don't occur, when we don't get things built, next thing you know, things expand in scale and in price. I can't think of anything that this hasn't happened to, whether it's the substation or the Buffalo Run Clubhouse. It is very frustrating to me, having been on the City Council for four years, to have four years, two years this term, to not see anything get accomplished, and then to have a much higher price come through to us. As was stated by one of our speakers tonight, yes, a substation is important, but we could do a scaled-down version and use the funds in a far better fashion. The police substation that was near Walden and 104th has now moved over to Highway Two and 104th. It's a bigger space. We paid for that. We paid for the lease. We paid for all of the remodeling and furniture in that facility. That is a substation. We are not without a substation. I really think that this is precipitous, and I am concerned that it's being brought forward by someone who is leaving the City Council, and we will be burdened with this over, oversized police station, not really a substation.
Mayor Protam?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remind you of?
I have five minutes, sir. I have five minutes.
Council policy about cheap shots?
There is no cheap shot here. I am afraid that we will be overburdened.
Point of order.
Mr. Zarzaki, if I have issued a cheap shot, please inform me. I'm more than happy to take criticism.
With all due respect, it's not the city attorney's role to make a determination as to whether or not someone made a cheap shot. That said, council policy does certainly say that council acknowledges that you will not take cheap shots at one another.
At one another. Thank you. Thank you. I think that I have made my point about this. It is a great concern to me, and I think that we could be using our dollars far more wisely in Commerce City than to make this an even larger edifice than we had already agreed to in 2023. Councilmember Madera?
Make the motion to approve ordinance 2723?
We haven't. All right, you can do that. Is there a second?
The mayor and Councilmember Dukes had their hand raised.
I'm going to have them speak. We can do the motion, and then they can speak. Is there a second? Councilmember Ford? Okay. Then, now, we can go to discussion. Mayor Douglas?
Thank you. Yes, you know, we had the council meeting on August 11, and it talked about funding and consideration. Actually, we had a, let me back this up here. Prior to that, we had a study session and talking about appropriating funds. The chief gave an update and talked about the police station, the substation, all that. And we, at that, at that study session, we all can take a vote, but a consensus that we would do this in phases as far as implementing what the desired needs are for the substation in the north. And so, on August 11, we had a discussion about three budget items, which consisted of police station, Chambers Road, and Buckley Park pack funding. So, there was big discussion around that. The topic came up about the substation, and knowing that we do need a substation and then the gap we have because of funding. There were three options. At that time, we didn't, we didn't talk about going forward with any number of dollar amounts, just that we were going to phase it in. And during the absence of our city attorney Zarzaki, a motion was made to bring forward, as we are today, $16,272, $72,574 in the General Fund unassigned fund balance. There was option two for $26 million, and option three would use $5 million audit revenue per year for 2025, available 2026, and available at 2027 for additional $10 million. And so, knowing we have other capital improvement projects in the pipeline, and this would not be starting built and this would not be starting built until late 2027, I'm not, I would not be approving this $16 million. We need to do this in phases like we agreed to. But to take this amount of money out now, when it's not going to be built this year, it's going to take a couple of years for us to even go process this, because it needs more funding, is not, is not right. So I will be voting against this, because I believe the $16 million right now, especially the government shutdown, you know, there's other areas that we could, we could go after funding. There's a grant we can get. Because of the new administration, there are grants that we could get for a substation. We don't have to take $16 million out of a general fund, on assigned general fund balance to do this. There's other ways of, there's other ways of getting that money. So I will be voting against this, because right now, we don't need to allocate $16 million, because it's not going to be built this year. Thank you.
Councilmember Duke?
Thank you. I will be voting in favor of this police substation. A lot of the arguments we're hearing again tonight was a part of the arguments we heard before, and we still decided to vote to move it forward. I will be sticking with my vote to move it forward. I understand that not everyone's going to be in favor of it, but I think, like before, we had a majority in favor of moving forward. The other thing is that I'm aware of is the cost of construction continues to move up, and having a grant or things that hope we get is only going to hurt our cost of construction in the future. I'm excited for delivering this product for public safety, which will be completed by 2027 in an area that is much needed. When you think about the cost of a police substation, and you think about the comparative or comparables of like Erie, Colorado, for example, they just approved another extension of their police substation at the same dollar amount. And when cited for the reason for it was because of growth, rapid growth in Erie, as well as the cost of rising for a police substation, so they decided to do it now. This is what we're doing, this is not uncommon. Ultimately, this is creating something for our community that's going to last longer than five years. And for me, it's not acceptable to have our police have substations in sandwich shops. I think it's time to have an adequate substation for our police that deserve everything they do, and so I'll be in favor of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Madera?
Yeah, you know, I can't remember the last citizen communication that we've had that hasn't had Ms. Valdez or several other citizens complaining about the lack of police response. You know, and it's true. I've witnessed this myself. I call on the weekends. People making excessive noise, and, you know, if it doesn't, if it's not the top-tier priority at that time, they aren't able to respond. They're stretched too thin, and every minute that they're in their car driving back to the substation over here is a minute that they can't respond, because they're on the road, and there's only one place for them to bring detainees. And, you know, as you've watched the fire department grow, their response is the exact opposite, because they've grown with the growth of Commerce City. They had the foresight to see, look, the city is expanding, we have a footprint, the area of Denver, if not larger now, by, you know, square mileage. And, you know, I tell people all the time, I live down south, I'm closer to the Cherry Creek Mall than I am to Reunion. Think about that when you're thinking about police officers having to make that drive. If there was someone in Cherry Creek getting arrested, and they have to drive to my house, is that an acceptable response time? This addresses a need in the community that's not only going to help those up north, it's also going to help the entire community here down south, because we'll have more police officers able to cover the ground instead of being stretched so thin, having to work, you know, countless overtime hours, because there's nowhere for them to do their paperwork, nowhere for them to change. You know, they're sharing locker rooms. Like, what is this, middle school football team? We're better than that, and this is a need that's been, you know, we needed this before 2023. And if there's anyone to blame for lack of construction on any of these projects, it's one body, it's us, City Council.
Councilmember Douglas?
Thank you. I believe that what we had originally allocated is an amount that's sufficient. And although we did have one community member come forward on this, I have heard from multiple community members, both north and south, that they do not believe that this additional funding of $16.3 million is necessary. They don't understand where this push is coming from. And if anything, we need more officers out in the community upholding the law and making sure that they're, they're out and about. So from what I've heard from the community, they don't understand where this is coming from, and they don't understand why we just aren't moving ahead with what's already been allocated. So I will not be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you. You know, there's a lot of opinions up here, there's nine. And, you know, you don't need a cop until you need one. When you need one, you want them to react in a certain amount of time. We have police officers now on motorbikes that have nowhere to even park their motorbikes in the event of a storm. We're down 50 cops in, in our community. And when you're down police officers, yeah, let's hire them. But you got nowhere to put them. And the police officers need to have a place. It's, it's one of our primary, if not the primary responsibility of this council, is public safety. And I know that there are some of you that think, we don't need that right now. And that's okay to have your opinion. I don't think we needed electric charging stations at our rec centers in our city hall. I don't think we need an environmental board to come in here and tell us about oil and gas. That's a state function. So we could, we could get down to throwing stones, if that's what you want to do. But when it comes to public safety of this community, I'm going to stand behind it 100% whether I'm going out of office or not, and I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Are there any other comments? Alright, I do want to make one point from the February presentation that we didn't see of 2024, that the only things that will be kept at the civic center are the court, radio support and records, bulk evidence storage, DNA storage, cash narcotics weapons cash vault, school resource officers, community service officers, traffic unit, K-9 unit, and animal control. So I think that residents of the South should be aware that most of the police department is moving north. Councilmember Teeter?
Yeah, I'd just like to say this, Commerce City is unique just simply because we have the Rocky Mountain Arsenal right in the middle of our community. Look at our fire, or fire stations, we got eight of them. It takes eight, they need 10. They're two stations down. They still need two more stations to cover the district. And basically, they cover the same district as where our city is. And two stations isn't enough. I mean, we're going to need more. But you got to look at priorities. Police Department, Fire Department, those two departments, they got to have a top priority over the rec center, over the different goals that we have. And, yeah, we all want these goals of improving the rec center and improving our roads, but safety's got to be number one, and it's got to be police department. I don't agree with the price, but I will be voting for this.
Thank you, Councilmember Teeter. Mayor Douglas?
Thank you. I was going to ask City Manager Rogers, what is our contract for the substation that we just contracted to repurpose a building off of Highway 2 and 104th?
Can you restate that question, Mayor?
The facility that the city contracted for a lease at 104th and Highway 2, what's the length of time for that contract?
We did not have a contract with that vendor, because we were using the landlord's contractor. Since it's not our property, we did not have the right to use our own, so we had to use the landlord's contractor to help us with the tenant improvements.
Oh, no, I didn't mean that. I'm saying, how long is that lease for?
That lease is for an initial period of five years.
Okay. So we don't want misconstrued to our pub, to our residents, that we don't have a temporary solution right now. We make it seem like we're not going to have any police, any police presence in the north, which is not true. We're going to have one for five years. So within that five-year time period, we'll have one constructed. I'm not against the police substation. I'm against the fact that we're spending money right now, or setting aside money right now, that we could be spending other places, because we have over 220-something capital improvement projects that we'd like to do, and this is just one of them. So let's just make sure we're putting the correct information out, that we will have a temporary substation for five years at the corner 104th and Highway 2. Let me make that clear. So by doing this in stages and getting the money to fully fund this police department, let's do it in stages. That's all I ask to do. I'm not against public safety. That is number one, but we need to be smart about it. Right now, the government shutdown, we don't know what is, we already know how it's going to affect Commerce City right now, but if it continues until the beginning of January, that's going to help us at all. So we got to make sure the money that we, that we purpose going forward is a wise decision at that amount. That's why I'm voting against this, because we should do this in stages. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Douglas. Seeing no further discussion, is there a motion?
Yeah, there's already a motion on the floor.
Oh, right, you are. Thank you very much, sir. Alright then, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Ordinance 2723, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating unencumbered fund balance in the general fund in the amount of $16,300,000 for use on the police substation capital construction project, including an inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the capital expenditures fund and authorization of the expenditure thereof. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Nope.
Thank you. Councilmember Duke, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you.
Alright, the motion passes, five to four. Moving on to the IGA amendment for expansion of East 120th Avenue, that's Ordinance 2731. I would like to invite Jenna Han, the Director of Public Works, to introduce the item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So really, there's, there's not any new information to discuss with this amendment outside of what we talked about during study session, although I am certainly happy to answer any questions. But I would like to highlight that during that study session, we discussed the funding for the $2.1 million gap that we have from what we've currently allocated for the project to what we need to allocate in order to fund the project based on the bids from 2025. And our funding source for that $2.1 million would be twofold. First of all, we would reallocate $1 million that we currently have set aside for the Dahlia Street project that we will be supporting Adams County with. So we will eventually participate in that project, but the county is not ready to move that forward right now, like us. They have many competing priorities and are anticipating to get to that project for three to 10 years. So we'll borrow from that account and eventually replenish it, since we have an immediate need for 120th, and then the remaining 1.1 million would come from a 2K contingency transfer. And other than that, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any other, does anyone have questions for staff? Councilmember Ford?
No, just prepared to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2731. Council is seated.
Is there a second? Councilmember Teeter?
Second the motion.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to introduce Ordinance 2731. By council is seated and approve on first reading. Will you take a roll call vote, please? Read the title and take a roll call vote.
Ordinance 2731, an ordinance approving a First Amendment to intergovernmental agreement with Buffalo Ridge Metropolitan District for the expansion of East 120th Avenue. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Duke, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vote is unanimous. Let's see 120th finish, that would be great.
Agreed, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we must be moving right along, because this script says "A motion to extend the automatic time of adjournment," but it's only 8:30, so I'm not going to worry about that. Let's move on to Ordinance 2719, LDC amendment pertaining to vinyl siding. Do any council members have questions for staff? Councilmember Teeter?
You looking for a motion?
No, I was just, I thought you were up for asking a question.
Oh, no.
Alright.
Ready for a motion, if you're ready for that.
I have a question. Does this apply to existing homes or units with vinyl siding?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. To answer your question, this applies to new construction. So new homes that are not yet being built in the city, this would apply to.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Alright, since there are no further questions, I need a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 2719. Councilmember Teeter?
I move for approval of Ordinance 2719. Council is seated.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, yes, Councilmember Chacon, I see that, and you were second, so even though you spoke out, I just need to make that point. You were second. Thank you. Alrighty. Alright, so can we have a reading of the title and-
Requesting a friendly amendment.
Yes.
Okay, friendly amendment was to allow this to come back in a year, to add that as part of the amendment, to come back in a year to see what challenges or what positives come away from the LDC once this gets approved. That's all. Just a friendly amendment requesting that from the, from the first and second, to see if we can keep this, obviously, the motion obviously is to introduce it as seated, but want to add the amendment to say, in a year from now, that we can have, requesting staff to come back with any of the challenges or positives that are coming away from this, so we maybe have to do a re-review of the LDC.
City manager would like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. What Councilmember Kim is speaking to is- Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. What Councilmember Kim is speaking to is a consultation that he had with me this morning about wanting to do an annual review of the land development code in the main, not necessarily where we're at, which is the amendment for the vinyl siding. So, we do have, I do believe that's what you were speaking to.
Sorry.
Councilmember Kim was the LDC that's going to be adopted, not necessarily.
My apologies. Let me take that back, then. I will wait on that one. Thank you.
You're retracting your friendly amendment? All righty. So, now?
Councilmember Dukes has his hand up.
Yes, Councilmember Dukes.
Yes, I just, you know, I've been a big advocate to keeping this in our LDC, but after talking with some folks in the industry, I realized that this is a practice that's actually moving away. They're moving away from vinyl siding, so I hope they replace with something that's as cost-effective, but I will be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Dukes. All righty. Can you please read the title and take a roll call vote? Thank you so much.
Ordinance 2719, and ordinance amending sections 21-7601, 21-7612, 21-7622, 21-7655, and 21-7663 of the land development code to prohibit vinyl siding in new construction. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to ordinance 2720, LDC amendment pertaining to plats. If you could, please describe what this would look like, and also, will it come to the city council, or does it stop at the planning commission stage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem Noble. This is the preliminary plat process, and it would be amending the existing land development code. So, this would take place for new applications that come in after this ordinance would become effective. In terms of how it works, the preliminary plat would be subject to a public hearings at the planning commission and the city council, so city council would have the final authority. And then, final plats would be administrative. But there are provisions to ensure that the final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved at public hearing.
I had heard at one of our meetings that the preliminary plat might have only about 30% of the plan laid out, and yet, this could have changes up to 20%. Do we still have a room to understand what will be built in an area in Commerce City through this process?
So, at the preliminary plat phase, and this is something that we've reached out to the development community on, and they're supportive of, you still are laying out the configuration of the lots and the streets. So, you know how many lots, you know where the streets are, you know where the open spaces are, where the public spaces are. What you don't have is all the engineering related to the construction of the streets, and drainage ways, and utility infrastructure. So, the cost savings to the development community comes in that they don't have construction plans for water, sewer, drainage, and streets that they would have at the final plat phase. But you do have the layout and the configuration, as I said, of the lots and the streets. And there has to be consistency between the number of lots and where those access points are between the preliminary plat and the final plat.
And at what point will the community know what's being built there?
So, the type of units that are being proposed, whether those be single-family attached, single-family detached, this applies to new residential subdivisions primarily, and to larger commercial subdivisions. So, that's when the public would know what's being proposed, is at the preliminary plat phase.
All right, that's excellent. And personally, I am really happy that we have reached this moment to be able to put this into the LDC. There was never any intention to cause any developer financial hardship, and I'm certain that probably was the outcome, and that is deeply regrettable. But we did not have any other way of having this discussion in public with the community, understanding what's going on. So, I personally will be voting for this, and I couldn't be happier that it's going into the LDC. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Teeter?
You want a motion?
Sure.
I move for approval of ordinance 2720. Council is seated.
And is there a second? Councilmember Kim?
Second.
Thank you very much. So, Clerk Garland, could you please read the ordinance and take a roll call vote? Thank you.
Ordinance 2720, an ordinance amending the land development code to establish a process for the review and approval of preliminary plats and to make related amendments the other sections of the land development code pertaining to plats. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the vote is unanimous. Now, we move on to ordinance 2688. Councilmember Kim, this will be your opportunity. Adopt the 2025 land development code, and I'll invite Mike Sutherland, the Acting Director of Community Development, to introduce the item. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Noble, and members of the city council. My name is Mike Sutherland. I'm the Interim Director of Community Development. Tonight's item is one of two very significant, interrelated, high-priority projects for Commerce City regarding long-range planning and the built environment. The first project, as you know, was the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, which began in 2020 and was adopted late last year by city council. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan updated the 2010 Comprehensive Plan and established a new vision for the community, along with character areas, goals, principles of growth, and enrichment of existing neighborhoods. Goal Four of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan is to utilize the land development code standards to improve the city's overall urban design, quality of life, and connectivity through strong regulations, including alignment of the development regulations with the Comprehensive Plan, and updating and modernizing of the land development code. This is the second part of the program tonight, which is the update of land development code. It began in 2023 and has involved all city departments and an extensive outreach program to deliver us to this meeting with the draft before you. Staff and the consultant have worked extensively to ensure that this draft code facilitates and implements Goal Four of the Comprehensive Plan in every detail. In some ways, tonight represents a culmination of five years of efforts by the city, along with hundreds of interactions with citizens, officials, and advisory committees, neighboring jurisdictions, builders, and consultants to modernize our development vision and regulations. I'm proud to introduce Brian Mayberry of Kenda Keast Collaborative, Heather Vidlock and Sung Hwan Han of city staff to give tonight's presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Again, Brian Mayberry from Kenda Keast Collaborative. This is a very big milestone, and I'm glad to be here speaking to you all this evening about it. I have a PowerPoint that is being shared now that just kind of is the high points of the high points, the tip of the iceberg for this large document. I'm just gonna give a quick overview, just a very broad summary of the draft, and then Heather's got a few slides kind of laying out the adopting ordinance and the future kind of steps that this project has still remaining. So, purpose of a land development code, and of this land development code in particular, is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the city, and that's kind of a foundational part of land development regulation, and that's part of this one as well. It also provides clear rules for land use and development, for procedures, for how preliminary plats are processed, how variances are reviewed and acted on, so that it's very clear to a reader that that's the steps they have to go through if they want whatever the application is that they're interested in getting approval for. All of these things kind of go further to not just beyond, you know, health, safety, and welfare, to supporting quality of life in the city, protecting and enhancing the environment, helping with the economy, with streamlining, and things that we've been talking about. As Mike said there, the plan was actually adopted a year, or almost tomorrow, one year, actually, for the Comprehensive Plan adoption. And again, this is a follow-up on that. The plan sets kind of the vision and the goals for how the city wants to grow in the future, but it's not a legal document, and the LDC is like the legal document that then brings those visions and those goals of the Comprehensive Plan to life through the enactment of rules related to land development. Several project goals, modernizing your current LDC so that it's more user-friendly, readable, using more kind of common, yet still legally defensible language, implementing, as I said, the goals and the policies of the plan, organizing the document. This is a very large document, organizing it into a logical structure that where procedures are with procedures and standards are with standards, because over time, you know, these things get amended, kind of in one-off amendments, and sometimes they're not kind of looked at globally of where these changes should go. And so, this is kind of our chance to look through it in a global view and structure it so that it's really organized logically. Tailoring the standards to achieve the quality development that the residents and decision-makers expect, based on the plan again, where we can, streamlining review procedures so that they're more clear, so that they are illustrated, and less time-intensive for staff. And then, of course, again, creating a user-friendly code that meets 2025 expectations. We worked on this document in four modules, and those are shown on the screen, and also in terms of the 11 articles that make up the land development code are shown there. And I'm only gonna hit on a few of these, and just really like a slide or two for the two or three articles that we do touch on here, just because, again, this is such a high-level overview. So, the zoning districts, the zoning districts have been reconfigured to an extent to implement the character areas of the Comprehensive Plan. You know, the character areas in the plan are not zoning districts, but they're sort of recommendations for how the zoning, the new zoning should be in the LDC. And so, we've taken our cues from the character areas in the Comprehensive Plan. The zoning districts are laid out so that there is a use matrix, as opposed to listings of land uses of what's permitted and what's a use by permit and what's a conditional use. They're in a concise table. There are also development standards within each zoning district related to density, building height, lot area, lot size, and a bunch of other numerical things of that nature. And then, there are building types that kind of are similar to land uses, but more focused on the design of buildings and of sites, so that there's less, there's still attention paid to land uses, but it's less micromanaging of land uses and more kind of concentration on the design of the site and design of the building. And that's sort of been the trend in zoning work for the past 10 years or so. Continuing on with the use regulations, so you had a setup there on the left of uses by right, uses by permit, and conditional uses. We've kept that similar structure, except made some improvements, we believe. By right, land uses are just those that are allowed, that don't have any special rules related to them. You know, an office in an office zoning district, or a single-family dwelling in a single-family zoning district, those are uses by right. You had the use by permit, which was a little unusual for what we've seen kind of in our practice nationwide. We kind of reconfigured that to limited uses there that you see on the right. So, your former kind of setup of uses by permit had, they were supposed to have standards tied to every use by permit, but many times, there wasn't a standard. As we reviewed your current LDC, there wasn't a standard for certain uses by permit. They required board of adjustment approval, and they were not tied to the land. They were instead tied to the applicant or the operator of the business or what have you. With the limited uses there on the right in the draft, we made sure that each of what had been uses by permit had standards for each of them. We worked it to where they could be administratively approved, rather than going to the board of adjustment. So, there's some streamlining there, as I mentioned earlier. And then, we tied the approval to the land, as opposed to the business owner or the operator of the land use. And that's much more common in our experience in places we've worked. And then, finally, with conditional uses, kept it mostly the same, except for, again, tying it to the land, rather than tying the approval to the applicant or the business owner. Still, we'll go to the planning commission for recommendation and still come to you all for final decision. Moving on to design standards, these are what we think of as like the building design, landscaping, signs, parking, and things of that nature. So, there are purpose statements for each of those kind of divisions that I just mentioned of the design standards chapter. We've made it clear when the design standards come into play. So, if there's just a small addition to a building, that might only trigger, you know, landscaping and lighting, for example. But if it's a, you know, a larger addition, you know, 100% addition or 50% addition to a building footprint, then more of the rules come into play, because that's a bigger investment in the property, so they need to comply with more of the standards. There's new building material standards, and this is reflected with Heather's previous case with the vinyl issue. There are building design standards as well for non-residential and mixed-use buildings that don't relate to building materials, but more like the design of the building. As you see on the right there, there's issues of height variation or increased setbacks or modulation of buildings. Step backs also come into play in certain instances. We also looked at the parking ratios and modernized them based on what we see other places, with the overall trend being to require generally less parking than what we have in years past due to changes in technology and society, where people are just not going out and driving and parking somewhere as much as they used to, whether they're shopping or going out to eat, or whatever the case may be. Tractor-trailer parking and staging requirements, we've gone over this a while back in a workshop session with you all. We added building foundation landscaping provisions. There's preservation for tree credit, so that if, or credit for tree preservation, so that if a site preserves trees on site, they get landscaping credit for those preserved trees. There's parking buffer yards, street buffer yards. We have a sustainability index in the draft, which is an incentive and a requirement that sites work in certain sustainable characteristics in order to kind of build up points where then they can then move on through the review process. We have provisions for amenity space, which is sort of like open space, but kind of broadened so that, you know, if you have a mixed-use environment that's a little more walkable and pedestrian-oriented, it's not really gonna make sense to have a large preserved, untouched, natural area. You're gonna instead have something more like plazas, or squares, or town green kind of designs in there that would qualify as amenity space. So, again, it's kind of a broader view of open space. We worked on subdivision standards, clarifying what constitutes a minor versus a major subdivision, generally speaking, requiring more like grid, street networks in the less, or in the more dense districts, and more curvilinear suburban-style streets in the less dense districts. We have standards for trails. There's standards for things like private utilities, private streets. And a lot of this input in the subdivision standards was very helpful from the city engineer's office on some of these more technical matters, and we definitely appreciated their way in. Final kind of slide of real content, the review procedures in this document, consolidating recurring elements of the review procedures like public notice, public hearing requirements, application supplemental requirements, putting them all in one's place, instead of having them kind of scattered out, because when kind of scattered out because when they're scattered out, there's chances for inconsistencies and duplications that weren't intended. So consolidation of these kind of common review procedures, setting really clear criteria for what constitutes the ability for approval of something like a variance or a site development plan or what have you. Making sure that when we could have made applications more administratively approvable, that we've done that. Making sure that roles of who makes recommendations and who takes final action on all the different review procedures are very clearly spelled out in a table. And then, of course, the preliminary plat aspect that Heather presented on would be carried forward into the new land development code, of course. So trying to have predictability for property owners, for neighbors that are next to development, having the rules written out in black and white and illustrated was very important to this project, which helps to promote, you know, stronger neighborhoods when there's good design for a development, then the neighborhoods in any given city are going to do better. Economic vitality with the aspect of streamlining the review process where we could. Sustainable growth, you know, again, I said the sustainability index was a significant addition to this document. Just trying to have finally a clear and fair process so that applicants can see the rules, set the rules where they're going to set them, have a clear process for applicants to go through review and hopefully get approval if they do everything that they're supposed to do. And now switch over to Heather to kind of wrap it up.
So, thank you, Brian, for the presentation on the land development code. With the adoption of the new land development code, the code will not become effective until we do legislative rezoning of the city. So coming to you next year in the first quarter, we plan to present a strategy for how we will engage the community on this legislative rezoning. And the city attorney has advised us that the code can't be applicable or effective until that rezoning occurs. Having said that, there's another avenue for applicants to take advantage of the new code, and that's that they can go through a rezoning themselves. So all new applications for rezoning or annexation will be subject to the new land development code. And in terms of existing properties and existing processes, those will still be under the old existing 2009 code until the legislative rezoning comes into play. There's no change to the existing vested property rights. Those will not be impaired by the adoption of this code. So if council were to approve the code this evening on first reading, it would come back to you on second reading in November, on November 3rd, and then it would become effective on November 10th. All pending applications that we're currently working on will continue to be processed under the old code, as I said, until that legislative rezoning occurs or until applicants annex and zone or do a rezoning into the new code. So short-term steps in the fourth quarter of 2025, we're going to be coming to you with an adoption of fees that would go along with this adoption of the land development code. And we're also creating those new application types in our system software. And we're also finalizing the development guidebook, which is an accompanying document that basically formalizes the facts-to-no sheets, if you're familiar with those, that guide people through our application process. It's really a user guide. So that would happen in the fourth quarter of this year. And then, as I said, coming to you early next year, we'll be presenting a strategy for how to do the legislative rezoning. And those legislative rezonings would occur between the second and third quarters of next year. And finally, moving forward with the long-term strategy is to come back to you with tactical amendments for maintaining this code and implementing the code of implementing the city's goals through the code. So we will do periodic updates starting next year. And with that, we have our team ready to answer your questions.
Thank you very much, all. Huge effort. Thank you so much. Does anyone have questions or comments? Okay, I do. Let's, Councilmember Douglas, let's go to Councilmember Douglas first.
Yes, thank you so much for this and excellent work. I did have a question. Are setbacks included in any of this?
Yes, those will be considered development standards and each, oh, I don't know if I'm coming through. Each district has, you know, building height, lot width, side setback, front setback, rear setback, all of those are covered in each district.
Very good, thank you.
Does anyone else have questions? Councilmember Dukes?
Yeah, thank you. I do have a question. Well, first, thank you, the whole city team to put this together. As we look back and we approve the comprehensive plan, and I know there was a lot of conversation about keeping the 2010 one, but this is like, as you described it, this is the reason why it's important to adopt the new one so that we can have the most modern and up-to-date land development code. So I'm so excited to be part of this journey. I do have a question. There was a comment made there, a public comment, and unfortunately, I didn't see the memo, but it seemed like it was around three big topics, right? The motor court, the driveway lengths, and then also looking at the green spaces or green courts. And I guess for the city staff, my takeaway of that is that without these modifications, we're creating land development, we're creating spaces that are not going to be usable and it's not going to be as efficient. Is that, can you shed some light into that?
So yes, you had some feedback this evening from one of the members of the development community relating to motor courts and green courts. And the comment was that the driveway lengths were excessive on the motor courts and that it was difficult to meet the standards of having only three units at the end of a cul-de-sac. And then finally, on the green courts, that the 60-foot width was too wide and that it would be better to have 30 feet. Staff has evaluated those comments and we find that it would be applicable to modify the motor courts. We do have some reservations about the green courts because we've looked at other developments throughout Denver Metro, and it's more in line with perhaps 40 to 45 feet. So we're open to some consideration, and if council would like us to study this more, we can always go back to the development community and do more outreach on these two issues and then come back to you next year.
Oh, so we can approve it tonight, but then also have the tactical amendments next year? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, we can do that.
Because my concern with the, what was it, the, was it the courts, right? The green courts, when you talk about the driveways. You know, when he said we were creating parking lots, that was kind of one of the concerns. I don't think we all want more cars in the parking space in these spaces, right? Was that the concern I heard as well?
Well, the concern originally came up at a study session that we had with council and planning commission. And council's concern was that there wasn't going to be enough room in front of the motor courts for people to park their cars. So we adapted the code to require a 20-foot driveway. The development community in this case is pushing back on that and saying that it's not necessary to dictate that driveway length because that can be accommodated through the motor court design.
Okay, because my understanding was that he said it was 30 feet was the recommendation. So if we're at 20, I think 30 feet is appropriate, is that?
No, the 30-foot was relating to the green courts.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. He wanted to get rid of the 20-foot driveway on the motor courts.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I don't know if there's a motion needed. It sounds like this regard to tactical amendments is outreach throughout the year. If that is true, then I'm okay with approving the, you know, making a motion to, I'm not making a motion yet, but I'm okay with adopting the LDC as is with this as a part of the long-term planning.
Thank you, Councilmember Dukes. Councilmember Kim?
I think now would be a good time just to ask the question regarding the amendment to the LDC as council has seated. So I guess for a city manager or potentially Ms. Fidlock, to monitor and to just do an annual review to identify any challenges or change recommendations by staff, is that something you guys would be able to do?
Yes, we can do that. We can evaluate how the code's being used, what the challenges are, what the positives and the negatives are, and the feedback that we're getting from the development community as they are utilizing the code.
And that could come back to us as a form of a recommendation or whatever the case may be. So this sounds like it's something feasible that you guys would be able to do? Okay.
Yes, we can do that.
Great, thank you.
All right, I will get back to folks for a second round. I have a comment also. So the questions I have are regarding what I noticed were six-story buildings. Is that what we are allowing?
There, I would have to look at the zoning districts and be able to answer that for you, so just a moment.
It's on, oh, shoot, I can't do it that way. I got to do it this way. It's on slide, the slides aren't numbered. Under design standards, big picture changes from existing LDC, those are six stories that you are displaying.
Yes, so we would, I would say that the illustrations are not meant to be to scale or to show what, you know, a development would look like precisely if it were to follow the rules in the LDC. They're for illustrative purposes. And so those are there to show instead the features of a building that would count toward meeting the design requirements of the building exterior.
Okay. Then I appreciate that the exterior shows movement and that they're not just block prisons, so that's good.
Correct, yes.
But it would be good to know how tall we are allowing these buildings to be. And with regards to the courts that we were hearing about as well, and I thank Councilmember Dukes for bringing that up, what is the normal length of a driveway for a single car?
20 feet.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at, is a place for these cars to park. And if they don't park in their driveway and they only park in the garage, where else would they park on a motor court?
I guess the next available parking would be on-street if not in the garage itself because we do have standards that say you can't park in the shared driveway along the shared drive courts.
Okay, well, then, right there, it seems to be nonsensical to have a 20-foot-long driveway if you're not allowed to park in it in any way in a motor court.
Just to clarify, sorry, I meant the shared driveway. So the access lane that kind of goes from the lot itself, people are not allowed to drive or park there because that is where vehicles will be gaining access onto the motor court.
You're talking about the cul-de-sac motor court then?
Yes.
All right. And I have a family member who lives in one of the motor court communities, and she is delighted that hers is straight and is not a cul-de-sac. So colliding with each other, I think, is actually a bit of a problem. I do prefer the straightaways just from her own experience. But I wanted to ask questions about the distance between streetlights. This has come up regularly, and I understand it's in our LDC about how close the streetlights are, and people are very concerned now about how far apart the streetlights are and how dark it is in some of the communities in Ward 4.
So, streetlights are mentioned not too many times in such a large document. There is a section called utilities, easements, and streetlights. But the extent that they're mentioned here is that saying that the city may require the installation of streetlights capable of illumination of streets and pedestrian walkways to ensure the movement of vehicles and pedestrians at night. So kind of a pretty broad statement. There is, there are other documents that the city has that I would imagine might address streetlights in more detail. They, I don't know what they're called, I don't recall what they're called here, but the engineering design specifications or engineering design standards that Public Works oversees would probably be the document that would address streetlight spacing as opposed to the land development code.
Okay, if it's not in there, then that's fine. And I was looking at the zero escaping section. How will that be overseen? How will people get approvals or do they submit their plans? How will that work?
Yes, it would be part of, you know, a landscaping plan that's part of a site development plan that would have to come through for staff review when a building is built or a site is developed or if a building is expanded a certain amount, that those would come into play.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. My time's up. Councilmember Teeter?
Yeah, I was just wondering how, we need to word this adoption if we want to include this comments from Mr. Scandon tonight on there, dealing with the driveways and stuff.
Thanks for that question, Councilmember Teeter. That's up to council as to whether to address that comment or adopt the code as it is. We will look into that in the future along with other ways that the codes work. We think right now that the green courts really provide an opportunity for, for, I guess, they provide an opportunity for flexibility that is similar to what the motor courts do. So we'd like to, we took council's advice on that, on motor courts and adopted those regulations within the current code or the draft code that's in front of you. And we'd like to kind of experiment with the green court side of it, which we think will help address some of that flexibility.
I guess that's my question is, so how do I need to word this? I want to adopt it, but I would like to still have staff look at reviewing it and, and I don't want to tie you up. I mean, so how can I word it to make it easy on you?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm sorry I didn't quite catch the grasp of that, but I think you could adopt it and ask council or ask staff to come back next year with needed updates. And we will look into that and several other issues that we have kind of in the parking lot, which is build rent communities, for example, things like that. And then we are expecting that there will be some adjustments that come with adopting a new code.
If I may, Councilmember Teeter, I think what you're, and I think he's trying to walk you through the thought process of what it will take for us to come bring that back to you. But I think to say pointedly about what you're asking, you would make a motion to adopt the land development code as presented with the friendly amendment or with the, in addition to exploring and evaluating the motor court driveway length requirement, the motor court shared actway configurations. motor court shared access configurations, court development, building separation, and to provide council with an update on recommended language within six months of adoption of the land development code.
OK, does that cover Councilmember Kim's concerns also?
Not including his request for an annual review of the land development code. So you would want to encompass all of those within your motion.
Well, I'll make that motion.
OK, we'll get to that in a bit. Let's go.
Oh, OK.
We're doing questions right now, staff. All right, Councilmember Douglas.
So with that being said about this amendment being proposed, will that be voted on separately, the amendment, or will that be part of this land development code vote?
So the, what, the motion would be all encompassing of what's presented to you tonight, but you're also then giving future direction to staff to continue to evaluate the amendment for those three items, the motor court, driveway length, the shared access, as well as then the court development, building separation. So we would come back to you separately with recommendations based on continued engagement with the development community and what we believe are appropriate scenarios.
OK, and that's key to me, engagement with the development community. What about the community? OK, so we came up with these because, and this was our advice to the people who were putting this together, because we want what's best for the community, not necessarily what the desires of the development community are.
I think the only reason why, ma'am, is that you have written comments from a member of the development community that has raised-
One member of the development community.
Nonetheless, ma'am, we still have that, which was discussed and presented. You're not required to, and given that they're the ones who are bringing this forward, that's who you would most likely engage in with in either saying you agree with, or there's an agreed to disagree on the standard.
All right, so my question is, will the community be allowed to be engaged?
I mean, if that's so the desire for the council, honestly speaking, I don't know where the community would be able to provide technical level details because what you're finding in the written comments are-
It's their lived experience. It's their lived experience.
If I may, ma'am, just, we have technical details of what's the individual that they raised with the council. I'm not saying that you couldn't. You can inform the community, but if you're looking for technical details back as to the application of whether it would work or not, you're going to have a much more primary discussion with the development community.
Well, technical is not necessarily lived experience, and we're promising people a quality community for a lifetime. That's why we spent so much time on this. You know, I, I just feel like we were so focused on delivering to the development community as opposed to the community that we're building for the residents who are living here. So I would like to see some way that the community has an opportunity to weigh in on this. And I don't, you know, we're coming up with this amendment. That's all I have.
Councilmember Madera?
Is there a minimum size for garages?
Just a moment. They're mentioned. It's taking a moment. I'm clicking through. And do you have in mind, sir, like a typical single-family garage or multifamily?
Mostly the length, right? Because I'm more concerned about the driveway lengths and, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is pickup trucks. And, you know, nowadays, they get bigger every year. They're like 19 to 21 feet long.
Really, I think where that plays more important of a role, if I may suggest, is the front setback of a structure. We always make sure that we'd, if it's a front-loaded type of building, by front-loaded, I mean a garage, you know, that faces the street, that it's at least 20 feet from the sidewalk so that there's not an overhang of the vehicle over the sidewalk and preventing a pedestrian access.
I guess, you know, my thought process, I'm just, I'm not comfortable getting rid of the requirement on the driveway lengths if, you know, garages at a minimum can't fit a pickup truck, right? You know, it's, you're just going to have the same problems that we have on my street where, you know, there's nowhere to park and so. You can get back to me on that. That's kind of my concern on that. I'm more favorable to requiring the driveway lengths for the motor courts.
And you're specifically asking in the case of the motor court issue, the, that's your concern?
Yeah, I want to make sure that we're not causing, you know, more parking issues by, you know, taking some of these minimum requirements away and then causing another problem as a result.
Councilmember Madera, the standard stall is a nine by 21, so we would expect that a parking space would meet that minimum dimension.
And then, is there a minimum, how many stalls, you know, per home? Is there like, is it based on square footage or?
We do have the parking requirements for single-family homes, and I believe that's two spaces. And so because you have to provide two spaces for a single-family home, the market will need to design a home that can house two cars in that garage, which would control the width and also from access the length, if that makes sense.
And if we were to remove the 20 feet, would that change the setback or?
Could you restate that, Councilmember Madera?
So, you know, they were speaking to the 20-foot driveway. Is there a setback from, you know, the, where the house begins to the end of the street? And would that change if we were to change this requirement?
Let me check.
So just to clarify, are you asking about the difference between the setbacks and the minimum dimensions we're assigning to the driveway length itself?
Yeah, I mean, if you have a 20-foot setback, right, you have to get to the garage. So does that change if we change, you know, the 20-foot driveway length requirement?
So the 20-foot driveway minimum is specifically to the motor court configuration just because you're requiring access of cars from a shared driveway all clustered around together. And so again, the intent was that if you require a minimum length for the driveways in these motor court configurations, you will end up in a scenario where you don't have four homes clustered together where the garages just directly open up to that shared driveway, but it's set back further so that the car can park in front of the garage at least 20 feet in width, in length, if that helps.
OK, so would bring the homes closer together if we remove this requirement?
Yes, correct, correct.
Thank you.
Are you still waiting for an answer, Councilmember Madera? Or are you satisfied?
No, they answered the minimum stall for a garage is 21 feet. So could reasonably accommodate a pickup truck, I would think.
All right, the height might matter on those things too, though. City Manager Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protown, Madam Mayor in this instance. Talking and thinking through, just when we're thinking about the amendments and to keep them clean, and in particular this issue, what I would recommend, it's not uncommon for us to have an image that gives the dimensions of your different type of garages and have that be also an enhancement to what's required when they're going through, meaning the minimum standard. Like I said, the typical garage is nine feet wide plus two feet on each side where you think about where the garage door opens, so that gives you a total of 20 feet. And then if you're thinking about the length of a vehicle, at most cases, your standard garage is at 199 inches as that converts to feet. And then if you have a tandem garage, there's, that's not uncommon to have that as a requirement when you're thinking about garage standards for single-family detached. That has to also be met from an evaluation process. So that is something, if you wanted to have, be a part of this, which again, it's not uncommon, it's not another tax or an impact on the community that has to provide it, we could always bring that back as an additional amendment to the land development code. I would say to your comments, Councilmember Teeter, about the motor court homes, it may be as simpler to adopt the land development code and to raise your matter, Councilmember Kim's matter about the annual review and if there's any discussion around the, this enhancement of garage dimensions as independent motions under admin council business.
At a later date? At a later date or just?
Tonight. You would just bring it up during admin council business, the motions to do X, Y, and Z. That way, it's separate, it's clean, and it's very efficient, effective, and deliberative for us as staff to move forward with.
OK. I have other questions about the zero escaping and the plant list. This is very detailed. There were some obvious omissions, the spring snow crab apple, pear tree, lilac bushes, and I call them freeway roses. I'm not sure what their real names are, but they are the little rose bushes that grow in rock gardens, lots of rock around, on main streets, like Chambers has a bunch of them as well. Is there a way to add to the plant list?
I would say the fact that it's an appendix, there is some flexibility for the director to accept other species that aren't contemplated in the plant list, as long as they're not considered and deemed by the state as invasive or nuisance plants, then there is flexibility and latitude for the director to allow species that might not be listed in the plant list.
OK, great, yes. And I did look them up to make certain that they were approved plants and they fall into that category, but they were just omitted for some reason. So there will be some latitude.
Yes.
All right. OK, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, let's start with-
Councilmember Dukes has his hand raised.
Oh, sorry. Can you use your hand marker? I see that more easier than your hand-tand. Thank you.
Yeah, my hand marker is up.
Oh, I can't see that. I'm sorry, I couldn't see it. Councilmember Dukes?
Oh, that's OK, that's OK. But I would like to make a motion to approve the land development code as it has been presented. And I, you know, I'd like to make that motion, understanding what City Manager Rogers provides guidance for additional amendments in the near future as admin council business. So love to approve it, make a motion to approve it as is.
OK. Is there a second to approve the LDC? Councilmember Madera?
Second.
All right, thank you. Discussion? Yes, I have a question. The two ordinances that we just passed, the two amendments, are they effective now or are they on this one-year delay also?
The two ordinances you passed related to vinyl siding and preliminary plat are effective upon second reading, so that would come back to you on November 3rd for second reading, and they'd be effective on November 10th. So those would come into play right away.
All righty.
And not have to wait for the legislative rezoning.
That's good news. Thank you very much. All right. So we can take a roll call vote. The motion is to approve the LDC.
Ordinance 2688, an ordinance adopting the 2025 City of Commerce City Land Development Code, providing a penalty for the violation thereof and providing how the 2025 City of Commerce City Land Development Code will be implemented. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the vote is unanimous. Thank you. So now the next motion, please. Is anyone making a motion? No. All righty then. We are moving on. Thank you so much. Thank you for all of your work. It's really impressive. All right. Thank you again. Do any council members have administrative business items of an emergency or unforeseen circumstance? Councilmember Kim?
Thanks. So with regards to the adoption of ordinance 2688 or regarding the land development code, what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion to request an annual review of the land development code to identify any challenges or change recommendations by staff.
Is this a motion that could be placed under notice council business for the future or is it considered an emergency?
It's a great question. It's the gray area that my recommendation is that this should go under admin council business, given the fact that the council member was going to make that motion to amend the LDC ordinance approval. So this just makes more sense from a legal perspective so that we can actually document the different motions being made. So I think it is appropriate here.
Thank you very much. Then is there a second? Council, Mayor Douglas?
No, I wasn't a second on that. I had a, sorry.
All right. Councilmember Teeter?
I'll second that.
All right. Discussion? Discussion? Councilmember Douglas?
Yes, is it possible to make a friendly amendment to notify the public of this coming forward with the review?
I don't see any issues with that. City Manager Rogers, any issues with identifying, being able to notify public? If I'm not, if I am understanding correctly, Councilmember Douglas is that you're looking to basically request city staff to essentially advertise this?
Yes, that it's coming forward, that it is up for.
That would be standard. Any review would be done during a, more than likely, a regular meeting?
I would like it to be a friendly amendment so that it is part of the motion. Please.
No issues accepting that. Councilmember Teeter?
All right, could you restate your motion then, including the amendment?
So the amendment is the, sorry, so what this is, is requesting a motion to request to do an annual review of the Land Development Code to identify any challenges or change recommendations by staff, but to also include to ensure that public is made aware of when this comes forward again. Councilmember Douglas, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right. That's the motion.
Your vote is open.
Thank you.
Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Duke's, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I have two items under administrative council business. Does anyone else have anything before I do? Councilmember Douglas?
So there was a community member that came forward in citizens' communication, and this is the place to address that. And that resident or member of the community came forward to express his dismay in not being able to have a table at the Harvest Fest, which was fabulous. It was a fabulous event, so well put on. But I want you to know that there were candidates who had table put up, and they were campaigning. And there were outside people who were using the opportunity to campaign at that particular event. And so to me, it's a double standard. This person was rejected, and the other people were given an opportunity. And I think that needs to be addressed.
City Manager Rogers, did you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. We are aware, we are looking into the matter, and we'll address it accordingly with our staff with respect to discussions and our matters that were held with Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you. Because the one candidate who had a table set up at this last event, at the Fall Fest, also had one set up at the Hispanic Heritage Event as well. So, and I really did think that was not allowed, but they were present at both and had a table with campaign literature.
Thank you, Councilmember Douglas. Consistency is important. Councilmember Duke's?
Yeah, I just want to echo that. You know, I saw the same thing. There's actually two candidates within the gym that had their stuff set up and they were sharing material while some others returned away. So consistency, I just echo what Mayor Protem said about consistency in terms of having it. I do want to make a motion, just kind of piggybacking on Councilmember Teeter's conversation earlier around having this review. City Manager Rogers, you've got to help me with this, as you kind of helped Councilmember Teeter as well around having a six-month review after the adoption of the LDC to look at the motor court as well as the green court and the driveway lengths, and then have staff be able to give us a recommendation based on best practice and policy after six months.
So where I think that goes, Councilmember Duke's, is that, right, it's direction to the city manager to work with staff in the continued evaluation of the adopted Land Development Code requirements for motor court driveway length, motor court shared actway configurations-
Oh, no, he froze up on me.
-and court development building separations, and to present its evaluation, analysis, and recommendations to the city council within six months of said adoption date.
Thank you. Sorry, you froze up a little bit on me, but I do want to make that motion. You just stated, and I want to be clear and just point a clarification around, this is not to make any, this isn't to change it, this is to look at the data and then to review if there's needed changes. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I would like to make the motion, if you can state it again. Or do you need to state it again?
Don't look at me.
Staff says they have it.
All right.
That's the motion I'd like to make.
I'll second it.
Is there a second? Okay. Councilmember Teeter will-
I'll second it.
All right. Do we do a roll call vote then? Oh, oh, sorry. Mayor Douglas, did you want to comment on this at all? Or you?
No, I have a-
Another item?
Item, yeah.
All righty, thank you. All right, roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, I missed the second on that.
Teeter?
Oh, thank you. Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Duke's, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Douglas, we're waiting for your vote.
All right, the vote is eight to zero with one.
Sorry, point of order, Mayor Protem. Per Bob Roser's order, we can't have an absent, we can't have a not vote.
I actually pushed no, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know why that didn't register. Let's reset the vote. Okay, your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, I have you as a yes, and Councilmember Duke's, I have you as a yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Teeter?
You can't do that.
One more time, please. Councilmember Douglas, or Mayor Douglas is a yes. Councilmember Duke's is a yes?
Yes.
All right, I have everybody.
All right, the vote is eight yeses and one no. Thank you very much. Administrative council business, back to Mayor Douglas.
Thank you. Thank you for the city for putting on, back on October 1st, the 96th Avenue public meeting discussion with the community. A lot of people came out, a lot of concerns. And I know I had asked about a light for people to actually get out of the neighborhood, since it's going to be four lanes, and the consultants and also our city employees, staff, they're letting their community know that they can make the left turn on a 96th, but the problem is it's going to be four lanes. Now it's two lanes. So it means more traffic, a lot of disruption. And, you know, it's this similar situation we have in Chambers, which we, we're looking at solving that situation. And I feel that since this construction was approved, and was also stated at night, we have an opportunity now, not only to put the conduit in and all that, but also look at installing a light at 96th Avenue in Laredo. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to direct the, to direct the city managers to look in, look into putting and installing a traffic light at the intersection of 96th Avenue and Laredo Street.
Mayor Douglas?
Yes.
May I, may I ask if they could also evaluate which is the best street? My understanding was that Laredo runs into a school. It's not a through street, that another street might be better. So have them evaluate what is the best street to get out of Frontera Village? As part of your motion? But a light at the south end of Frontera Village at 96th?
Yes, I could, I would consider that.
Then I would second it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion-
Councilmember Duke's has his hand raised.
I understand. We have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Councilmember Duke's?
Thank you. You know, first, thank, I want to echo, thank you to city staff for having that open house. And I am concerned about voting yes on this because of, the city has done planning and traffic studies to design where is appropriate traffic calming measures. And without knowing that data and knowing what's, or without trusting the city staff in this case, we may be creating unintentional consequences that might cost us more in the long run. And so I wanted to just put that out in discussion, I guess, ask the city manager Rogers, hey, what does the data show? Does it warrant a light at these intersections? Or from my understanding, it didn't? So is there any wiggle room, or what might this do?
Yeah. Thank you about that, Councilmember Duke's. In regards to the traffic signal at Laredo, one has been designed for a signal, but as it currently stands, it does not meet traffic signal warrants. So there is intentionality at the appropriate time when the level of service has triggered the warrants in order to construct, but that is not today.
And question, question, thank you for explaining that. So it's designed for one, but in terms of budget, is it budgeted right now? And if it's not, how much would that increase this project?
It is not currently budgeted. That would have to be an additional appropriation, just with what we're seeing with the other traffic signal, somewhere between 750 to 900,000.
And that could also, I understand, be on delay as well, I'm assuming, based on our 104th in Chambers.
And just allow me clarify that, right? That's the going price of 750, 900,000. We'd also then have to review other development agreements to determine whether or not it is required for them to participate at this time, if and when their development has or has not met a contribution towards that signal. So timing's also important in that as well.
With the timing and with the additional outreach, would that delay the 96th project?
It does not delay the 96th project. Like I said, it's being designed to be able to accommodate it. It's just from a budget and from a warrant data-driven perspective, it's not needed.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we have Councilmember Douglas.
I believe I inadvertently didn't cancel my request.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Teeter? Did you have a comment? All right. I think I needed to remove all users from the queue. Now it's empty. Anybody else have a comment? Nope, okay. It's my understanding that the last traffic study may have been done as much as three years ago. Do you, do we have any idea how recent that traffic study was?
I can ask the question and get that back to you shortly.
All right, thank you. Mayor Douglas?
Yes, thank you. Now, you know, we had the same discussion about, on Chambers, on those two additional intersections, same thing, they weren't warranted to be installed, but they were directed by council to get those to mitigate traffic. And I just want to get ahead, like the city to get ahead of what is going to occur come 2027, and that is a high school going in, you know, a lot of traffic, a lot of young drivers driving on that road, and this would put us ahead of that situation. So it's not that it's going to happen, it's just this will, accidents will occur without having a light somewhere along, whether it's nuclear, whether it's mobile, or if it's at Laredo. Something has to occur now with the specs in order to have this light be put in. We need to be proactive. We don't want to wait until there's another accident like there was on 81st and Tower. So let's, let's look at this as a way where we are thinking ahead and putting our residents in the forefront and not looking at this as not being warranted. Of course, it's not going to be warranted, so we're the other ones. But this is the council direction. That's why I'm asking for us to take that action to make sure this happens.
So just to be clear, the ones on Chamber were warranted. We did go back and look at those again, and that was clarified when those came back. And I-
I disagree with that, City Manager Rogers, because I asked several times about those two intersections, and you told me that they weren't warranted. But if it's council direction, they can put it. If the city does it, it would go against what the engineer's advice was. So I just want to make that correction, because that was stated.
So I will, I will say it again, Mayor. On June, when the motion was made by the Mayor Protem, we did share that the warrants were at least met for both. One had to be met. We cannot put a traffic signal in if a warrant does not, is not met. So in that motion that was made for Chambers and Heartland and 117th and Chambers, we were on the record to note that a warrant, one of the 11, under the MUTCD, was met that would allow for us to move forward. If the desire is to have us look again to see if the warrant analysis has said anything differently, myself and my staff are more than willing to do that and to bring that analysis and that information back. But we cannot just put a traffic signal in without conducting some analysis and hitting at least one of those.
Okay, well, as was stated, this, I'd like to find out when the traffic study was done for 96, because, you know, it's, the volume's going to increase.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the traffic study was completed in 2023. I do have staff looking, because they believe we may have also conducted additional warrant analyses since then as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm just, I'm just looking at, at the future Commerce City and that when you do, when you have the opportunity to put this type of structure in, it's going to be less, at a less cost, less disruption. So just looking at planning ahead, that's it.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So we will take a vote now. Could you restate your motion, Mayor Douglas? Oh, Councilmember Duke's has something more to say. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mayor Proton. I guess I have a, I want the friendly amendment to the motion. I, I think we all are in agreement. We need a traffic light there. There's going to be more traffic in the near future. I guess my friendly amendment would be to, to wait to get more data from the city staff on whether there was additional warrant and look at that data again to try it. And if it is still true, if we have the warrant, go ahead and put the traffic study in.
I'm okay with that friendly amendment. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Douglas?
Thank you. I attended that community meeting, and I can tell you that there were a lot of people who were extremely concerned about safety and especially the safety of young people. And so I will be voting in favor of this, but I would like to know, can the trap, can the, the study or whatever it is, is proposed, will that include projected numbers that will, will result from the, the high school going in? I mean, people were, I heard from so many people that they were so scared that there was going to be a carload of kids that we're going to lose. And that was, that was from a lot of people.
I mean, we can definitely take a look at what would be required per the, the warrant findings, and we will have to present that to you. Obviously, when we think about a traffic impact analysis, a traffic impact analysis looks at existing conditions, which is ambient background conditions plus project, plus project could be the consideration, the consideration of proactive development. So we can look into that. And one of the things just to share, yes, kind of going back to Chambers, and we will look at this. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear. When we originally shared, shared Chambers and 117th, we said it didn't meet the warrants under the MUTCD. The MUTCD has been most recently updated to include an additional warrant finding. And as such, we were able to evaluate and to then come to the conclusion that it met that additional warrant, which that allowed for us to move forward with Chambers and 117. So, you know, we will be looking at this under the new MUTCD and the warrant analysis, but we have to take that first step with that traffic analysis, because that will protect the city from liability. Because if you put a traffic signal in or any type of countermeasure or valid analysis and you, and there is an accident, the city can be held responsible because we didn't follow the engineering standards and requirements to determine that it was necessary. So we at least have to do that first step. And if that first step says yes, you need to install, we will make every effort to install and identify how we can get that done.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Teeter.
I just wanted to make a statement on, you know, every time there's a change made, like right in and right out on, on Laredo and, or on the, whatever two streets it is, then people change their traffic routes. And so right now, we're looking at how people are reacting to the roads. But once that's done with the right in and right out, it's going to change, the people are going to look for different streets so that they can make their left-hand turn out there. So, so right now, you really can't do a study today until after that's completed. And then it'll completely change because people will change their routes. See what I'm saying? In the future.
Because of the construction?
Because of the construction and the right in and right out and, and different things. I mean, when it's completed, people will be changing the routes that they're, that they're driving today versus then, because it's safer. And I mean, just so that they can make a left-hand turn. So just a statement.
Appreciate your statement, Councilmember Teeter. All right, so we'll, all right, Mayor Douglas, would you like to restate your motion with the acceptance of the friendly amendment and my comment?
All right, I'll, I will try. I'd like to make a motion to, to direct the city manager to look into additional studies and analysis that are needed to properly evaluate and implement installing traffic signal on 96th, but include looking at Laredo, nuclear, and a mobile as options.
Thank you very much. Will you take a real call vote, please?
Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that vote is unanimous. Councilmember Teeter, did you have anything else?
Is this under council reports or?
No, we're on administrative council business.
Oh, no, I don't.
All righty. And city manager, did you have something else?
The one thing that was missing from that motion was expecta- expectation on turnaround of that analysis and data. I suspect it will probably take us a handful of weeks to do the actual necessary jammer testing and then to review the data. So I, I believe we would be able to be back in front of council with some information before the end of the year or turn of the new year.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Who else has administrative council business besides me? Okay, I have two things. Sable and 120th. As I recall from Jenna Hahn's report to us on street safety, Sable and 120th was considered perhaps our most dangerous street. There were two accidents in this past week. One was involved a fatality. Is there, what is our role at Sable and 120th?
That's a good question. And unfortunately, there's not very much, because the actual four-way intersection there is actually in Brighton and, and/or unincorporated Adams County. We have a small sliver that ends just east of that intersection that we come up to as far as right-of-way that, that we own. But we actually do not own any right-of-way within that intersection. That was a question that we did have during our internal review of the document that appears it did not get cleaned up. But that is something that would be more driven by, by Brighton and, and the county to have to, to address, given it's outside of our incorporated boundaries.
Okay. And meantime, people need to be really careful there. That is a very dangerous intersection. And here is my other question. The chip seal issue throughout Commerce City, both south and north, and repairing the chip seal. What happened recently is that there were street sweepers in the reunion area that came through on chip sealed streets. And the chip seal was ripped off of the road themselves and even removed the crack seal, just stripped the crack seal right off the cracks. The roads are clearly deteriorating now, but there has been no discussion as to what is going to be done by the city to repair the damage. The city did stop street sweeping in the reunion area on the chip-sealed streets, but we are still left with damage from the streets that were swept. Do you have an update on that, city manager Rogers?
All that I can say, ma'am, is it's an ongoing conversation with PW. I am looking for a most recent update to that. The public works director, as well as one of her street team members, did drive that area in review of the concerns and, and issues. Their analysis, whether there's an agreement or disagreement, is that the road is overall in good shape. It may look worn, but there is no driver safety or, or impact. The only thing that will keep chip seal from continuing to come up would be a fog seal as a band-aid until there is a true mill and, and overlay. And that's part of the, the issue with, you know, chip seal and then street sweeping, chip seal is that you're using chips to address the issue and a sweep, a street sweeper is going to grab those chips and pull them up. So yes, they're still evaluating alternatives. There's not a great alternative outside of a, a mill and overlay reconstruction, which that road may not qualify, even because it's still in good shape. And, and you're dealing with some cosmetic issues with respect to that coming up. But I am not, since having that information, been able to really sit down and get a strong recommendation from our staff, because they're still looking at all of the potential alternative solutions.
Well, I do think that since they did not resume street sweeping, that probably it caused more damage than is being highlighted here. And the public works director did indicate that, yes, that was the case to me directly, and that they may need to do oil and that ultimately mill overlay. But that is something that applies in all of Commerce City where there is chip seal. They haven't, the city hasn't done chip seal in five years. It's been only mill overlays. So I think that we need to be looking at that for the, for the future, is to get all of Commerce City converted again. Thank you very much. All right, so we'll move on now to city manager reports.
In economic development, staff is currently reviewing steps to transition the Calis program into a facade landscape improvement program. This gives greater application to the TIF, TIF dollars that can be applied to help the local businesses. We're also exploring entertainment and creative district opportunities, as well as clean, green, and safety enhancements, and a refresh of the art master plan to include murals, as well as placemaking programs as farmers and artisan market. We had a total of 214 people attend the free outdoor screen Hotel Transylvania for, on the field at Dick's Sporting Goods Park this past Friday, October 3rd. The field was buzzing with activity ranging from face painting, inflatables, free swag, and soccer activities with Rapid Man. In public works, we have received word that the traffic signal poles are anticipated to be delivered within the next eight to 10 weeks for 105th and Chambers. But there is a chance that those could be delivered sooner. In the meantime, we are continuing to prepare the caissons to hold the poles and working on conduit necessary. So once we have the poles here on site and delivered for construction, it'll take anywhere between 30 and 90 days for that light to be up and functional. Chambers 117th and Chambers in 100, Chambers and Heartland, design should be completed by the end of October. Poles will be ordered as soon as design is finished. Right now, we are ahead of the design schedule, as well as the Highway 2 median project bid for segment four came in at 1.3 million. We have a grant for a total of 3 million, so this will allow for us to be able to design another segment based on engineering judgment from our public work staff. And last, group, but not leaves, PD, this Saturday at, at 9:00 AM, CCPD will be hosting our third annual costumes for the COP event here at the Civic Center. The event provides free costumes to children in the community. And just a general note, October 18th through October 21st is the International Association of Chiefs of Police Annual Conference that will be here, held here in Denver. So I assume that we will probably see an uptick of our unhoused activity in relation to that. So we are already preparing on how to be able to stay on, on top of that. And at the last meeting, there was discussions about exploring increased enforcement activities around RV parking on our streets, abandoned or inoperable. I've had an opportunity to be able to meet with our legal counsel, as well as the chief of police, and we'll be preparing an email based off of what we believe are effectively what we can, cannot do, and maybe some things for consideration by, by the body.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager? All right. City Attorney Zarzaki?
Nothing from me, thank you.
All right, we'll move now to council reports. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that it's unfortunate what happened with the Commerce City Connected and two of our council members not having their profiles in the Connected. I, I do not believe it has to do with trying to rig the election or any of the stuff that I read on Facebook. I want to thank Dylan and Travis for everything they're doing to make sure this is a fair election. I want to thank the city staff for stepping up and going above and beyond to stop that Connected from going out and to make sure that everybody's profile is in printed form. The reason I bring this up is because four years ago, there was an election. I was in that election. I was a silhouette in the Commerce City Connected for exactly the same reason. I don't believe it had to do with my race or a corrupt election system. But me and Gene Luffel were also silhouettes, and I want to apologize for any doxing or appeared to be doxing to our staff. That is all.
Councilmember Douglas?
I'm, I'm so sorry. So first of all, I would like to extend our deepest condolences to the families of David Alexander Righia Jr. and Diego Rubio. They were the two 13-year-old young men that we lost going to soccer, soccer practice in a horrible, horrific traffic accident. And I want to make sure that I said that first and foremost, so that it got into my, my report. They were both 13 years old, and such a terrible loss for our community. And just want the families to know that we sympathize with their loss and, and I can't imagine, I can't imagine what they're going through. So with that said, I want to congratulate Paul at the, our, our golf course for doing such a great job for the VFW. They have had all of their past tournaments in Golden. This is the first year in Commerce City, and it was because of the way they were treated by the staff and especially Paul at the, at our Bison Ridge, our Bison, whatever the name of our golf course is. I'm so sorry, I'm a little thrown off here. But it was because Paul did such a fabulous job, and they're going to be booking here again next year. So Golden's loss is our gain. Went to the Cups Gala, and again, the Bison Grill did a fabulous job of doing this, putting this gala together. It was absolutely beautiful. It was so well done. And so I'm going to give a, a shout out to the people at Cups, and then also to Rob and his staff, particularly Jen, who worked really hard on organizing everything for the people from Cups. I went to the, let me see. Oh, I just did a whole bunch of stuff this week. So I think Fight Night was great at Cronky. And then I wanted to also congratulate the Adams City, no, Adams Middle School, Adam City Middle School A and B team for winning the soccer championship that was held at Dick's Sporting Goods Park. And the Adams 14 Homecoming Parade was And the Adams 14 Homecoming Parade was a huge success as well as the after-party and want to thank the city for their contribution to that. It was a great success. That's it. Thank you.
Councilor Kim.
Got a few things. First and foremost, attended the Youth Commission meeting where the Youth Commission is going to be holding a boards and commissioned form of town hall on 10/18 from 10 to 2 here at the Civic Center. All the boards and commissions, city liaisons were notified and that information should have been passed out to the actual boards and commissions. Past Wednesday, I was part of the, as I'm doing this, Citizen Academy for CCPD. Outstanding overall, got a chance to meet both K-9 officers, Delta and Holland, both Malinois that are very aggressive and very, meaning they have a prey drive. If you don't know, Malinois are very prey-driven, so just keep that in mind when, if you want to adopt one. Also, this past Friday, again, I'm also part of this as well as I reported out previously, the Adams 14 Education Foundation Commerce City Leadership Class. It was nonprofit day. We got a chance to see a bunch of different nonprofits. It was great overall. Past Saturday, we had a Veterans Commission Retreat. And also a few other things too. Actually had a conversation with CDOT and a few of their representatives to discuss future and a few other issues such as the pothole issue, the unhoused, also short-term, meaning in the next year or two, projects that are going to be coming forward. The other thing too, I got a chance to do was check out, even though I do not partake in this, went to Social Cannabis, the business that we approved to go on the corner of 104th and Tower Road. Great security, great, great staff overall. It was, it was well-received by a lot of the community members. Obviously, some disagree with it, totally understand that, both sides of it. Next door to it, they're gonna, talking to the owner, he was telling me that Third Round Social, which if you know what Flight Co. is down in Lowry, it's similar to it. They're looking at opening sometime in the first quarter of next year. That is all I've got this time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor? Mayor Douglas?
Yes, thank you. I had a question for City Manager Rogers. You probably didn't see my hand. What's the update? When are we going to have the update for 112th? And then the tow truck yard for the city? And the clubhouse construction start? And then anything up, any updates we have with Dick's Sporting Goods Park?
So all very good questions, Mayor. I know I've talked, I'll start in the middle and then I'll work to the end. The middle discussion being a public tow yard, obviously given some of the service needs that we have and/or gaps in the efficiency that we're experiencing, both from a public and a private use. We are evaluating that and that discussion will be one that we will hold with you while at the beginning of next year. Staff is doing its due diligence to understand resources from equipment, materials as well as actual land in order to be able to accommodate that. With respect to your first question about 112th, I'm awaiting on the analysis from my staff to be able to bring that back to you. So I suspect that that'll be a November timeframe when we will have that. And we're looking at what the, we're looking at the more cost-effective solution of just reopening it as a dirt road, but as well as understanding the other aspects of how that would be necessary to deliver a much bigger project. But I'm hoping to have that information for you all by November. And last but not least, myself and my colleague to my, to my left, in regards to Victory Crossing, have been in a different number of conversations with KSC around the redevelopment of the development around, obviously this site as well as Dick's Sporting Goods Park. Hopefully, we will be able to have some more information to share with the council late November, early December. They are reviewing information internally about how they want to proceed with next steps with respect to the city and our continuing partnership on that development. And hopefully, that will be much clearer for us when they get back to, get back with information and responses.
Okay, and then also the clubhouse?
Clubhouse, we had our kickoff meeting as I shared with council via email. We are finalizing just the, what we call GMP, the maximum price that the project will have. And we are finalizing that aspect. And once that aspect is finalized, about not exceeding the 12.1 as the bid, we'll be off and running.
Okay, so we're maybe starting construction, are we going to wait till the after winter, like coming into the springtime?
So, yeah, so what this will allow for us to do is finalize the design because it's going through the design build process, which is that you take the architectural concept that was provided to you all that allowed for us to generate the maximum budget at the time of 13.6 or within that 13.6 budget. We put that architectural drawing out to bid in which the contractor got back to us and noted that a GMP maximum price would be around the 12.1. We are firming that up. They will then take that architectural drawing and build or design that construction drawing to such, to completion, and then we will be able to initiate construction from there. Is my understanding that we are still targeting the same window for construction and completion, which would be through the 2026 year as well as to, into 2027 for delivery?
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Protim, I do have a report, but I'll wait till after Councilmember Dukes. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Dukes.
Thank you. It's a busy week as well. I wanted to thank the city staff for the Family Fright Festival or Family Fright night, Friday night. I think it was a great event and City Manager Rogers, thanks for sharing the numbers. It was a great turnout. A lot of people had a lot of fun and so we look forward to that again next year. I was able to actually attend the Pancake Breakfast with South Adams County Fire Department. They did a great job of being such a community event. It's such a great way to see just folks across, all across Commerce City. The Adams 14 Homecoming Parade, I was able to ride with Councilmember Teeter and just see the joy and the pride of Adams City and everyone who's from alum to folks that are going there now to nonprofits. The car show was amazing. And then I was able to end my, the day at the Fall Festival. And again, kudos to the city team around this event. It keeps getting better and better. And it was such a great turnout from folks across the, you know, east, west, south, north part of the city and really enjoying the time. And I'm just impressed at how much it has spread out across Eagle Point where you had gallery on the go, you had, you had face painting, you had so many different things. The bands were amazing and it just keeps, keeps being a highlight of our, of our community. The other thing I wanted to just highlight, I was able to go to the Feline Fix over in our, our city center next to the, in the south, next to King Supers. This is a nonprofit organization that really provides low-cost spay and neutering for our feline friends across the city. They've been in existence for such a long time and I haven't made it over there, but I was actually, I have made over there before, but I was actually make, able to do a visit with their new executive director and it's just great to have this type of service for our community. Last, I wanted to just thank Dylan and the team and everyone who would do the thought process with the chamber to have our ability to have these candidate forums at both of our rec centers. It is important for us to have this open dialogue and forums for the community to see our candidates in person and hear responses that's beyond just Facebook rhetoric and other things, maybe. We don't, we don't have a common newspaper across our city, so things like this is critical. And it took a lot of planning, a lot of effort, and I just appreciate the community turnout as well as the staff on, you know, the League of Women's Voters and the Community College of Aurora as well as the chamber and as well as Dylan and his team to think about this as a possibility to have them here. Last, I just want to just thank Councilmember Dare for again bringing up this, the Connected. I know this is a touchy subject, but I thank the staff for being so professional to, to fix an issue that took place in a short amount of time than they did because it's all connected for our city. We deserve to be able to know our candidates and to be able to, to be engaged. That's my hope is that everyone's engaged. I do just want to say just this one point around just being cautious as a person in a leadership position. And although the hiccup took place, you know, it's how we respond that makes a difference. And I just want to caution leaders in general that when we use race baiting, we stop listening to each other and we start labeling. This type of rhetoric doesn't solve problems, it only deepens them and ultimately hurts us all, no matter who you are, where you're from, and our city deserves better. And so I just want to add that statement there, but thank you all.
Mayor Douglas.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Douglas, for acknowledging the loss for, or to youth and also to the families. That loss goes way beyond just those two connected with our city. See, my report starts back in September 23rd. Participated in a roundtable discussion with aerospace organizations. There were 17 participants with Representative Evans. And also attendance was Jason Dennison and Courtney Brown from the city. Thank you very much to those two staff members for our leadership for coming out to that roundtable discussion. Later evening, I attended a meeting with myself and Councilmember Douglas to preview high school career technical education program for discussing ways to support students' interest in aviation, aerospace and other technical trades and STEM career pathways. September 26th, visited the Center of Equity and Excellence in Aviation. See ya to learn more about the ongoing program initiatives that aim to create a more inclusive aviation workforce pipeline. And then September 28th was the continuous of the Center of Equity and Excellence in Aviation. Was a project takeoff over Denny Anderson Airport, which brought together many pilots to answer questions from youth and their family. The event provided valuable insight for students' interest in aviation career and aerospace and created strong communication to the community engagement around flight and education. To 29th and the 30th, participated in the Second Annual AI Conference held in Denver near the Denver Central Public Library. Event highlighted the growing role of artificial intelligence in local governance, public service and economic development. And then I was interviewed by the Denver Gazette. So with our, our take on IA with the city, also with the school districts. And see, also on September 30th, attended the I-270 Stakeholder Work Group, Eagle Point Rec Center, stakeholders discuss infrastructure planning, path, traffic impacts and the future improvement timelines. And then October 1st, participated in the Metro Mayor's Caucus with the civics results. I thank you, Councilmember Dukes, for bringing up, taking action for the ATVs and e-bikes because they are an issue. The e-bikes right now have some, they're not just five, 10 miles an hour, they're 25, 30. I see kids popping wheelies and driving like 100 yards. Let's be like a 12-year-old getting their keys to their family car and driving because they are interacting in space where cars are. So that's, that's not good. Also, October 1st, you know, we talked about 96th Avenue Public Meeting over at Safflon Elementary School and appreciate the community coming out to that and the staff for also putting on what the community will see with the 96th Avenue construction. And then October 3rd, participated in the VFW Director's 10th Annual COP Tournament, great participation in the foursome. Thank you, Councilmember Teeter, for participating as well. And then also participated in the Fright Night on the field. Got there a little later, the ATVs were all over, but families took part in watching the movie, which, which was great to see the families interact with, with their families. And then October 4th, joined Adams City High School with the parade. Well, I decided to walk that parade route, which, which is great. You know, you, you see community members, it's just like we have our parade, people are excited and they're watching the students from elementary participation to junior high participation in the high school. Unfortunately, the football team did not win their homecoming, but you know, best luck for next year. So I just also want to also thank the city for Fall Fest. I was able to make that event as well. And yeah, there were some, some concerns and hopefully in the future, we just make sure they're, they are community events and not a way for, to put political process or tables at that event. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. You were definitely busy. Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Teeter.
Yeah, I went to most, all those things too, but I guess I'll start out with Adams County Healthy Drinks is one of the things I did. Then we attended the Vasquez 62nd Avenue Project along with the city manager and Councilmember Douglas and Councilmember Dukes. It was a nice event. Went to the Cup Gala fundraiser, went to the Free Electronic Recycling Center at Adams City High School. And the next day, we went to Adams City High School's Homecoming Parade and the car show. And we went to the VFW fundraiser along with Mayor Douglas and the Fall Fest that was just another, another great one. And one of the places I went was I toured McLean Warehouse Food Distribution Center up on 117th, just east of Tower Road out there. And first thing I noticed, it took me 25 minutes to get there. And we're talking about how police can get around our community. I mean, that was, and then coming back around the other way on the arsenal was like 35 minutes. So it's just a long ways off, but they got a nice facility, a nice warehouse, and I think that's a great benefit to our community and I'm glad they're there. While we was there, also the Aurora City Council was there, a couple city council members and, and I got to talking to them and I asked them what they do to, what, I said, what do you guys do to bring all those great businesses in and how can we learn from you? And he says, well, I gotta tell you, we learn from you because that's, that's the main thing that we do is we do exactly the opposite of what Commerce City does. And I had to thank him for the information and I want to thank staff for putting on that code thing, land development stuff tonight and it's just working with the developers a little bit better and hopefully we can change our, our ways of doing things and start bringing some of those good businesses in. And I've also heard the same thing from Brighton City Council people that they do just the opposite from what Commerce City does. So I'm hoping we're changing our ways to make things happen here. But that's all I got. got.
Thank you. Okay, I am the last one here, I think. Councilmember Teeter, I would just like to note that both Brighton and Aurora have economic development corporations, which we don't have, so we might consider that, too. That was something we raised when we did the Blue Ribbon Economic Development Committee. That was something we could work on. We had the Policy and Governance Committee meeting on Friday. We discussed how to clarify benefits for boards and commission members, which might include three options instead of just one that will be coming before you. We also discussed the need for clarifying council member voting authority on these boards, and the agreement of the group was to bring forward to that council members not be voting for members of boards and commissions. And also, we reviewed the draft revisions to the Boards and Commission General provisions that had been created by the city clerk's office, and only noted, one exception was how to explain unexcused absences. What does that mean? And how to hold people accountable and replace those members who don't attend. And then the last thing was to discuss having land use hearings in a different way, which will be far more complicated and will be coming before you as well. I also attended the 96th Avenue meeting. It was, it was really useful. It was good to see everyone. I met with the representatives from the Harm Reduction Network about issues that they're having, working with Commerce City. I attended the Cup Gala, which, yes, absolutely was a wonderful, wonderful event. I spoke with State Senator Daftna Michaelson-Jené, who has offered to help with the Fuels Impact Enterprise Fund effort. And over the weekend, I got a call from Shannon Byrd, who is a former State House representative, and she was one of the sponsors of the Fuel Impacts Enterprise Fund. And at first, she said she thought there must have been a rulemaking that Commerce City missed in some way, and then we both looked at the bill together, and she realized that, in fact, that decision was in the bill. And she didn't even know that that had occurred. So that was percentages of who got what, city of Aurora, Adams County, different counties, and so forth. So something occurred during the legislative process, but no one quite knows what yet. I attended the Senior Commission Lunch and Learn, Anything Library was the speaker, and the good news is, is that Anything Library is looking for space in Commerce City in the north in order to set up an outpost. I also attended Speak Up at Bison Ridge. I have received an anonymous letter at my home from someone who is associated with the city of Commerce City, and I just want to note to that person that the city council does not get engaged on the level that you are referring to. So I don't have any other way of telling you this, because your letter was anonymous, but a city council isn't able to help you on that. And then my final note is that there is a developer who is distributing a doctored email between myself and him. It was a perfectly cordial email on my part. However, he removed a section from the email in which he spoke about the death of youth and made reference to a death outside of a school that happened a couple of years ago. These emails all took place in 2023, 2024. I'm not able to do anything about it in some weird way, although people who live in Settler's Crossing, who have received this email chain, can ask me for the emails. I'm more than happy to provide them to you. Fortunately, the city archives all of our emails, so that entire chain that has no doctoring to it is available from the city, and I'm more than happy to share it with you. I'm very disappointed at the route that this person took, and it is so unnecessary, because I've been very cooperative and have met with him multiple times, except I quit meeting with him after the emails. That's it. We are at 10:29. Councilmember Douglas?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention how successful the Coffee with the Cops went at Reunion Coffee House. It was packed, and, and the, the policemen were so engaged with the community, and, and the community just really appreciated it. And I wanted to let everybody know that it, it went well, and how much the community really loved having it, and how much they appreciated the policemen that they interacted with.
Thank you, Councilmember Douglas. We are adjourned.